Call the meeting's order at six thirty-two, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, sovereign republic, where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Here.
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 Present.
Present.
Presence. All right, we have one trustee on Zoom, I think the village attorneys on Zoom on his way back from a meeting. We have a full house tonight, as you see, so we have some oaths that we're gonna be giving and some acknowledgements that we're gonna be doing as well. So I'm gonna start with the Predator State Wrestling Competition Achievements. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, eight wrestlers here. Raise your hand. You wrestler? All right. So this is the Predator State Wrestling. We have Lucy Carson. I call your name, stand up. And then why you come up here when I call your name? She not here, okay? She may be on Zoom too. It's IKWF Girls Intermediate fifty-seven pound. She had sixth place. Where was the state championship at? Where did they do this? Peoria. Peoria, okay. Civic Center, they do it there. Um, we have, if I put your name, I'm sorry. Bada Joe Riley. Bada? Here, Veda, Veda? Where are you? Come up here. All right, she is the IKWF Girls Intermediate ninety-five pound champion. I mean, I don't know where you're at. Seventh place finisher. Leela Carson. Leela or Lila? Lila? Not here either. Hey, on Zoom also IKWF Girls novice seventy-four pound, second place finisher. Uh, and I see a bunch of Glowackies come up here. So we have Molly Glowackie. She here? Hi Molly, how are you? Uh, she is the IKWF, WF, WWF, I think WWF here. Girls Senior ninety-pound, uh, third place finisher. Abby Glowackie. Abby, come on up. IKWF Girls Senior hundred-ten pound, sixth place finisher, Sophia Inajosa. She is the IKWF Girls Senior hundred-and-twenty-five pound, eighth place finisher. Gray Glowackie, Gray. She is the IKWF Senior seventy-four pound, first place, uh, three-time IKWF State Champion. Congratulations. Jackson Sullivan. Jackson here. IES A double-A eighty-pound, third place finisher. So what grade are all of you in? Seventh? Fifth? Sixth? All right, so gearing up for high school. I know they have a men and women's team now for the high school, correct? All right, so anything you guys wanna say to the crowd? Get, um, thank your parents, that all the practices they took you to and all that? All the money they spent on hotels for the tournaments, right? All right, well, congratulations. Keep up the good work and we'll see all of you back here next year. Thank you. Thank you. We're the coaches, by the way. Uh, coaches, all right, stand up, coaches, cuz you had, you had to go. Run or you gotta say anything?
Thank you, everyone, for your hard work. Hope to see you guys next year in a better place.
All right, sounds good. All right, we have a very good, thank you. Um, we have an appointment tonight for Planning and zoning. Uh, we are going to, um, ask for a, uh, motion and a second to appoint Adam Zakrinsky, Zakarchinsky, to the Planning and Zoning Board to replace now trustee Jose Martinez with a term ending in twenty-twenty-seven. Do I have a motion and a second? Second trustee Bluthard. Roll call, please. Yes?
Yes.
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 Aye.
Yes.
Six voting yes, uh, motion carries. Adam, why you come on the ground? It's sworn in. Phil Lord will cover.
Hi, Adam Zakarchinsky, having been appointed as member of Planning and Zoning Board of the Village of Antioch in the County of Lake, who solemnly swear affirm that I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. Now faithfully discharge the duties of Planning and Zoning Board Number to the best of my ability.
I will. Thank you. Have been, uh, heavily involved in the Antioch Lions Club for years in many positions, basically runs the chicken barbecue every year, so. And he also professionally owns an environmental testing company, so he's very well versed in, in the environmental issues, so thank you for being on the board. All right, thank you. Thank you, Bob. Bob's the chair. Thank you, guys. Norm, I got you next time. We're bringing you back one more time.
Yes.
All right.
Can't get rid of him.
Yeah, get rid of him. All right, so we have a couple of officers, um, that are, uh, either being promoted and are sworn in. So the, um, the first one is the promotion of Commander, uh, Charles Smith, Chuck Smith, the Deputy Chief of Police. Um, I'm gonna ask the Chief and the Clerk to administer the oath. I'm getting on the front for his roast here. One of DC Johnson, you get to join too. So for those that won't be able to make it next month's meeting, Deputy Chief Johnson is gonna be retiring the end of next week after twenty-four years of service. Scheduled a conflict with his family wasn't be able to be here, so we will just next month. So, thank you, DC. So as Chief, I have many report and corp responsibilities in the organization for managing public safety, overseeing budgets, responding to emergencies, but none are more critical than developing our future leaders. Preparing the next generation to take the reins ensures our department never misses a beat. Succession planning within their department is just not a buzzword. It's essential for the ongoing success of our mission. Tonight, I'm honored to promote Commander Charles Smith to the rank of Deputy Chief of Police for the Antioch Police Department. Well, well-earned step towards a dedicated leader who embodies that principle. Deputy Chief Smith has been a valued member of our department since two thousand and three. Over the years, I have been able to watch him grow into one of our most dependable and respected leaders. He's the kind of person who quietly shows up every day, ready to tackle challenges ahead. If you've ever had the opportunity to meet Chuck before this, you know he has a naturally stern demeanor. A classic "I'm not mad," is very serious, but it can silence a room, command attention without uttering a word. Some, something that we affectionately refer to as his resting command base. Beneath that no-nonsense exterior is a leader with deep empathy and a genuine care for every member of this department and the community we serve. His thoughtful approach ensures that decisions are fair, balanced, and always put people's well-being in mind. And then there's his thumbs. Chuck's thumbs are so remarkably large, they could qualify as apartment mascot. His massive thumbs handle everything from typing up detailed reports of his staff members.
Did he anti-write this?
No. He meticulously polishing his impressive collection of antique silverware. A hobby that surprises many, but perfectly illustrates his unique blend of discipline and attention to detail. With Deputy Chief Johnson preparing to retire on June sixth, Deputy Chief Smith will have some big shoes to fill. And if nothing else, I'm more than confident his thumbs will easily fill those gaps. Professionally, Chuck's courage has been marked by versatility and broad experiences. He has served as a patrol officer, a canine handler, a patrol sergeant, a detective sergeant, and was even assigned for several years to the Metropolitan Enforcement Group. In addition to his current role as Commander of Operations, where he oversees the daily management of police operations throughout the department, he also serves as our Public Information Officer and is an executive off, or officer for the alias Mobile Field Force Region Four N. Deputy Chief Smith is committed to continuous growth. He is completing his bachelor degree at the University of Wisconsin Osgoche. He's a proud graduate of Northwestern University School of Police Staffing Command, credentials that underscore his dedication to continued professional development. This promotion of Deputy Chief recognizes Chuck's past achievements and his vote of confidence in leadership, integrity, and compassion he brings to this department every day. I am proud to welcome him to this new role and look forward to the continued positive impacts he will have within our community and the men and women of this department. Please join me in congratulating Deputy Chief Smith as a leader with a steady hand, sharp mind, and thumbs that could double as riot shields. Now asked that the Clerk administer the oath, and the Deputy Chief Johnson will have to wear his badge. It's not only a symbolic passing of the torch from one generation to the next, but it's also a practical move. Because let's be honest, with thumbs like that, he was never gonna get that close.
Hi, Charles Smith, having been appointed as Deputy Chief of the Village of Antioch Police Department in the County of Lake, who solemnly swear affirm that I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. Now faithfully discharge the duties of Deputy Chief to the best of my ability.
So I don't have many opportunities to have a battery and not get charged for it, so this is my one chance. And you'll see, this is my actual badge. Yeah. Ah, when you do it on somebody else. All right, you're gonna do great. All right.
All right, congratulations, Chuck. And if you don't know, Norm, he's a, he's a heck of a golfer, so the police call team is gonna take a big hit with him leaving.
Thanks.
All right, we have two more oaths. Uh, we have, like, the next oath is the oath for Officer John Brogan. Mayor, where is he gonna do Officer Brogan and Officer Creo at the same time? Okay, so I'll see it, so. For the record, Officer Martin Grillo, also, welcome, welcome. This is what I always feel. All right, gents, you're new, so I'm gonna be gentle on this, okay? The following the well-deserved promotion of Deputy Chief Smith, now it's time to turn our attention to the newest chapter in the Antioch Police Department's commitment to public safety. It's with immense pride and a profound sense of purpose that I stand before you tonight to publicly introduce two remarkable individuals who answered the call that few dare to embrace and who have already become integral members of our team. These members have not only successfully navigated the rigorous demands of the police academy, but have already started their field training program. In an era marked by unprecedented challenges recruiting for law enforcement, the decision these gentlemen have made is nothing short of extraordinary. To choose a life of policing is not merely to select a career path, is commit to a sacred trust, embrace a profound calling to serve, protect, and uphold the very sanctity of our community. This profession offers a front row seat to some of the most vital and impactful work that takes place on the face of this earth. The daily unfolding of human life, we are granted the unique privilege to stand as guardians for a comfort in times of distress and ensure the safety in order that allows our community to thrive. It demands unwavering courage in the face of danger, unblemished integrity in every action, and unshakable commitment to justice for all. We are not only incredibly proud that Officer Brogan and Officer Creo chose to dedicate themselves to this challenging yet profoundly rewarding profession, but we're equally proud that they chose this community as their place to begin their service to you, the residents of Antioch. Their decision to join our ranks speaks volumes about their character, their resolve, and their inherent desire to make a meaningful difference. Officer John Brogan, who stands on the right, is my first honor to introduce him to our community. Officer Brogan is a resident of Conda and a proud graduate of Southwestern Illinois College Class one fifty-five. Recompleted his foundational training on the April twenty-fifth. Part of joining our department, John, own a strong work ethic and commitment to public service with the Fremont Township Highway Department. These invaluable qualities undoubtedly serve him with the distinction throughout his law enforcement career as he dedicates himself to serving our village. Joining John tonight and sharing in this momentous occasion is his sister Brittany, who had the honor of putting his badge, symbol of this commitment and our trust. Also, here to support him are his family members Taylor, his nephews Julian and Leo. We are truly delighted that they can all be here to witness this significant milestone. Second, it's my immense pleasure to introduce Martin Creo. Who has also graduated from Southwestern Illinois College Class one fifty-five at the same time Officer Brogan. Officer Creo is a resident among the line, outworn generation American, fluent Spanish, reflecting a deep and rich connection to experience. He recently graduated from Lakeland, Lakeland University, where he pursued studies and promote justice, and a dedicated member of the volleyball team. His birth background coupled with his invaluable language skills will be an extraordinary asset as he interacts and serves all members of our vibrant and diverse community. Tonight, Martin is joined by his father Martin, his mother Anna, who will have the honor of putting his badge. And also here to support him are his family members, Zella and his nephew Luca. We are so pleased that they can all be here to share in this special occasion. To the families of Officer Brogan and Officer Creo, we extend our sincerest and most heartfelt welcome. Your presence here tonight is a powerful testament to the unwavering foundation of support that you provide. When someone joins the police department, it's not merely an individual stepping into the role, their entire family joins with them. You are now a vital part of our extended law enforcement family, and your understanding, your patience, and your unwavering support will be absolutely critical through their entire careers. There will be demanding shifts, challenging situations, times when your loved ones will rely on your strength and understanding more than ever. Knowing that they have you standing with them, standing beside them, and understanding the unique demands and the necessary rewards in this profession will empower them to serve with even greater dedication, resilience, and compassion. We recognize and appreciate the sacrifices that you two will make, and rest assured, we are here to support you just as we support our officers. Officer John Brogan, Mark Creo have already begun their field training, marking the critical next step in their journey of dedicated service to our community. For all the residents that are here with us tonight, please join me in offering a warm welcome and heartfelt congratulations to these two exceptional individuals. We eagerly anticipate profound and positive impacts that they've all had in protecting and serving our beloved village for years to come. I'll now ask that you're putting this to their lips.
Hi, John Brogan, and I, Martin Creo, having been appointed as Patrol Officer of the Village of Antioch Police Department in the County of Lake, who solemnly swear affirm that I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Officer to the best of my ability.
Congratulations and welcome. Um, thank you for coming tonight. And again, uh, next, Rick, one, the citizen's wishing to address the board. Uh, I didn't see anybody sign up earlier, so. And I'll let you guys, we don't wanna be bored to death, leave the room. All right, we'll have better temperature control in a couple, in a couple months. Um, all right, so, um, I didn't say this earlier, but we did, we did switch around the, uh, meetings tonight. So we typically have the regular meeting first, where we vote on items, and then the committee, the whole. We flip flop this, there's a couple of big ideas, including the budget, so we are going to do the committee, the whole meeting first, the discussion, and the voting second, so. Just for FYI, if you're wondering why it seems a little bit different. Um, so, regular business, I'm committee, the whole, first item is approval of the April twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented, do I have a motion and a second? Motion trustee Peterson, again, and trustee McNeil, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
He's on mute.
Mr. Pierce, on mute?
I'm on mute. What you didn't hear me saying was Lori, I can't hear you because your lips are moving, but no sound was coming out of your, your microphone, but I will say yes.
Your vote on the minutes?
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
All right, five voting yes, one abstention, uh, motion carries. Uh, first item is a, uh, application, so it's a liquor license request for Chaos Kitchens LLC. Bless your heart, to be located at four eighty-four Orchard Streets. Uh, the applicant is here in person, if there's any questions from the board on this. Raise your hand, just so we know who you are.
All three.
Any questions for the board on this? It's a new restaurant, um, I think the menu and everything is included in the, uh, in the packet, so. Um, if not, then.
I do have one question.
Oh, yeah, trustee Pierce.
Um, I, by the address, it's located somewhere in the Pickly Wiggly complex or the Orchard Street Mall? Can we get a better definition of where it's located there?
You know what, come up, just because people are on Zoom, I'm sorry, just come up to the microphone, just. Yeah.
Pretty much. So we are located in the Pickly Wiggly Plaza. We are two doors down from the Wings, et cetera, and directly next door to the Dollar General.
Okay. Thank you, that helps.
Anything else? All right, if not, if there's no, um, objection, we'll move as the next, uh, meeting for, so. Okay, so June eleventh, there'll be the final group. Hey, or? You know, the vote. Um, all right, next item is, uh, and again, if you guys don't wanna stick around for this, you're gonna get into the budget discussion. Oh, you know what, I'm, is Chief Cochrane here or somebody here? Oh, there he is, okay, see him. All right, all right, thanks, guys, yeah, thank you. All right, so we're gonna move item number five up, so, uh, we don't put him to sleep. It's, uh, discussion regarding the fire alarm monitoring program with the Antioch Fire District. So this is, um, item number five, which is now being moved up to number three.
I'm gonna turn this over to Chief Cochrane to present. Um, as you know, with the transition to Lake town, one of the driving factors behind that would reduce the response time of emergency services and reduce delays. This is coming before you is a, uh, discussion regarding consolidation of fire alarm monitoring services. Um, this is, uh, would be a district-wide initiative that the fire district to seek the villagers' cooperation on, and they need our help and help with this. I have a rather large portion of the district. How you like that?
I think he summed it up correct. Trustee, it's good to see you again. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Um, as Chief Gutjow said, we started an initiative of consolidated dispatch probably seven, eight years ago uh, with the idea to reduce response times, um, and call transfers. Currently, um, the fire alarms dispatched, um, or fire alarms set, it triggers alarm in central station. That call is then picked up by, it could be any one of twelve, uh, fifteen central stations um, that are contracted by businesses, um, to answer their alarms when they're not there. Those calls are then sent to our dispatch center, uh, which is SenCom. Um, SenCom's in Round Lake Beach. It's a significant amount of time for that alarm to be, uh, picked up at the central station, then called to the proper dispatch location. And there are times where that dispatch location, SenCom, uh, is missed, and we'll, we'll hit the wrong dispatch center. They may hit box late before a border end. Um, that being said, um, we have a number of false alarms. Why do we have these alarms? We, we respond, our district responds to anywhere from twenty-five to forty-five alarms, um, a month. Um, those could be for maintenance issues, those could be, um, just smoke, could be, uh, user error. Um, there's a whole host of problems. Uh, with those, um, there's battery issues and, like I said, maintenance issues. In this consolidated effort in, uh, Lake Com, um, there's thirteen dispatch, or I'm sorry, thirteen fire districts and fire departments, and I believe it's twenty-two police departments that are going into the dispatch center. Our goal is to have that dispatch center up and running, uh, the second week in July, and start migrating our PSAPs to answering, uh, the dispatchers that answer your calls for nine-one-one to that center. We feel this is gonna drastically reduce our response times, um, in both EMS calls and fire alarms. Excuse me. Uh, Antioch and the First Fire Protection District are one of two of the last to join, um, this initiative to bring our fire alarms all directly into Lake Com. So when those fire alarms go off, there's no call transfer and there is no delay. It goes straight to a call taker, and those calls are then dispatched to the appropriate, uh, department. Excuse me. Um, that, uh, with that being said, um, most, most departments, most, uh, districts have, uh, contracted with a company called FSS. Um, and FSS has all the head-end equipment sitting in, uh, Lake Com at this, at this time. What FSS has proposed is a flat fee, um, of monitoring of thirty-five dollars a month. And then there's forty-five, I'm sorry, forty dollars a month for the radio equipment to send those alarms. Now, those alarms and that radio equipment become property of, I'm sorry, not the alarms, but the radio equipment becomes property of FSS. That forty dollars covers the maintenance, the batteries, and all the follow-up work that has to be done. What it also does, it allows, uh, it alerts them that there is a problem with the radio system, within their radio system, um, and they can get a technician on it. Currently, right now, we have to wait for the fire alarm company or the, um, answering point to identify that there's a problem, and that usually comes from the key holder or the business owner. Um, so for a total of seventy-five dollars a month, it's gonna cost, um, the business owner, uh, it's, it'll cost seventy-five dollars a month for that business owner, um, to have his alarm system monitored. What the ordinance we're proposing, um, requires them to go with FSS. Lake Com will not let any other, uh, entities in. If, um, we choose, um, we can work out an agreement to go with FSS, it'll just be business as usual, which we don't want, and that goes against, uh, our mission of reducing response times. Um, we have most, well, I think, uh, I shouldn't say most, there's a number of, um, fire departments that have chose to charge a higher rate, uh, over seventy-five dollars. We could opt to charge more, uh, than the thirty dollars. Uh, this, I'm sorry, the thirty-five dollars. That money then is recouped back to the fire departments. I don't see charging a business any more than we have to, and just keep it to thirty-five dollars, um, of monitor fees. There is, uh, within the language of the ordinance, there's, uh, the possibility that that can be revisited. Um, you can put something in your language where you recoup the funds. Um, that's up to you, um, but as far as the fire district's concerned, we're holding the line on the flat cost. Or I'd like to see you also hold the line. This initiative, um, for me was, um, I thought was fairly simple. Um, our attorneys saw it a little bit. Um, our attorney saw it a little bit different. Um, he seems to think we have to get the village on board first, and then the fire district will follow suit following month. So how, how you guys move ahead is similar to your, um, life safety code. You guys adopted the life safety code, we followed suit and took on your life safety code to enforce those codes. Um, like I said, we wanna try to get this initiative moving. Um, I think it's possible for our attorney to work with your attorney, so we had similar language. Um, and I guess if you consider this initiative, it's good for the people, it's good for the businesses. I, probably ninety percent of the businesses will see a reduction in their fee, their monitoring fee. Um, I know, I don't know who you guys had, um, but the company we had, we were paying a hundred and thirty hours a month, uh, for our monitoring fees for each station, which now we can go to thirty-five. And that's kind of my baseline, is how I hold it. Most, uh, reputable monitoring companies, um, are around a hundred. So on behalf of entertain, any questions you have, if you're curious about the timeline, curious about the product, I'll do my best to answer.
Question. So, um, is this, is this gonna be the charge passed on, I know you said to the business owner. Is there instances where it would be passed on to the building owner and they would just, you know, corporate it into the rent? Or, um, how, how would the process work? Because, for instance, I know, like, you know, they, at my office, it's a, Mark owns it, and I know they did inspection, set a bill for that, it's fine, but the monthly fee, like, I've never, we've never paid anything monthly. It just goes to Mark for the current system, so that was my only question on that.
That's based on your lease?
Yeah.
You know, and that should be spelled out, your lease, what's covered, whether it's the fire alarm, the H T A C, um, that's building-dependent. I can tell you, there's, um, three hundred and eighty-two fire alarms in the fire district, or fire suppression systems, of which two hundred and fifty or so are here in the village. Um, how the notification works, um, FSS does all the work, there's no cost to the village, there's no cost to the fire district. What they do is they start soliciting letters. Um, we have a company called Liv, it tracks all the fire alarms. We know exactly who has a fire alarm, when their fire alarm is certified, they have to report that fire alarm to Liv. So we have a tracking mechanism for this. And then our fire inspector's able to follow up, um, with those. The sneaky point with this, um, is, uh, businesses will have to break a contract, and this is where the legal end comes in. Um, it's been challenged in court, they can legally break their contract because the authority having jurisdiction, which would be us, um, is saying you have the direct connect to our fire alarm system in the name of life safety. Any other questions?
Sure. This is only fire alarm, right?
Only fire.
So someone's got, is this residential too?
No, commercial, commercial.
What about, will you guys respond, probably it's fire type of response, probably three times a month to condos, apparently. The way those were built, it would be, they detected right over the stove.
We can, we can't get into residential, individual residential body statue. Um, we, we're only allowed to go into public places. If, you know, it's a, um, apartment building and it has a fire alarm in the hallway, we can take jurisdiction over that, and they'll have to switch theirs over, but individual residents can go with whoever they go to.
I have one question. So like, the Piggly, the Piggly Wiggly building, you know, it's one owner, multiple units. So I would assume they're on one system, and then each unit has their own, obviously, detectors. So is it built for that whole system or each unit is built?
Each unit has their own, uh, detection system and their own alarm.
Okay. So each unit, okay, got it. Any other questions? I think, oh, Scott, uh, trustee Pierce.
I, I didn't quite pick out in the conversation. If we approve this, we're gonna require the business owners to pay the fee and join this?
That's correct.
Uh, I'll have to think about that, thank you.
You have other questions afterward, you know where to find me.
Yep, I know where you are.
All right, um, okay, well, this June eleventh also for the vote, I don't think it's on the second, it's just really for the approval stuff.
Right, I think, you know, if, if it's just okay with the board, if we can work with your staff and your attorney and our attorney to kind of develop language, so you have something to approve.
Sure.
Um, that's all right.
Sure, okay.
Do you have your cost savings to the guys?
To us?
Yeah.
Um, well.
It's gonna be a cost saving, a man card. Just for not responding on the fake calls.
Yeah, the fake, the false alarms?
Yeah.
Yes, there is, but I haven't, I don't have the, we should pull it.
All right. Thank you.
So.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. All right, um. Let's go, next is, uh, item number four, which was pre, in discussion regarding the proposed operating budget for the fiscal year May first, twenty twenty-five to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Um, Michael Peterson, so I, uh, just again, I wanna thank him, staff. I'm sure I've been driving them crazy over the last sixty days, lots of meetings, I appreciate the trustees for engaging with staff on, um, meeting with them and going through these items, so, um, it's probably the most, uh, comprehensive or engaged budget process I've been in since, uh, I've been here four years ago, so thank you.
Glad to hear it, thank you, Mayor. Um, so first, I'd like to thank Jim for preparing the slides, looking forward to seeing him myself.
So the misspellings won't be yours.
I did see. I wanna thank, I wanna thank, uh, administrator Gutjow and directors, the board, for their patience and assistance through this process. Um, as you all know, the schedule changed and they were accommodating to wait for me to show up before they began the process, I much appreciate that. And so twenty-eight months later, um, what we completed was completely build the, uh, budget and five-year financial forecast from scratch. Uh, we eliminated the ClearGov software, which I think made a lot of the directors happy. So with this, there's over a thousand line items, revenues and expenses, and there's, uh, nine years worth of data in there. So will there be some errors? Yes, there will be some errors in there, um, we will find them. Um, so the numbers go from twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-one with the five-year financial forecast. Um, and again, we'll, we'll correct for those with the appropriation ordinance, if maybe. Um, next year will be better, uh, we'll begin, begin the process sooner, obviously. We'll start off with the capital projects and replace the meeting, uh, then we'll have the, um, probably a salary discussion and then get to the budget. Um, and then, by that point, we're strictly looking at the operations. This year, you're kind of getting it all, um, pretty much all at once, especially, um, Christine Martinez, who just joined. Um, we had, yeah, baptism this morning, uh, I think he knows it all. Um, I appreciate all trustees for their time, um, to come and meet with me individually with, uh, with the capital projects, as well as, uh, most recent discussion, budget discussion. Um, I like the one-on-ones, um, gives me a chance to kind of see what they're thinking and, um, where maybe I'm missing, um, some reporting to them. And so I did, I did make one change, and you'll see that as we go through. Um, and next year, I know I'm gonna have a lot more time to analyze and review the numbers. Um, so it's, it's been quite a bit. So your instructions were the down arrow, thank you for that. Too far away? Thumb's not big enough? Hey, chief, thumbs. There. Good? Well, I have to get a clicker. And you'll make a note. Um, so this first slide is the fund balance summary. Um, this is just a big screenshot, uh, snapshot of the nine years I mentioned, twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-one. Um, this slide really, what, the most important thing that you'll gather from this slide is that when you're looking between project, projected year twenty twenty-five and budget twenty twenty-six, you'll see, you'll see some sixteen million dollar drop in the fund balance. And you're gonna find out that's because ten, ten million dollars for the Public Works Building, another one point seven million towards Village Hall, another two point eight million in the water sewer capital, and seven hundred thousand-ish in equipment replaced. Those, those are the significant dollars that will be spent this year. And so from that point, you see that the, uh, fund balance then drops again from the thirty-eight, thirty-eight million down to twenty-three million, and again, drops further in twenty twenty-seven to seventeen million. Um, again, there's another five million in that, uh, Public Works will be the significant number, uh, for that trial. Um, we know, by having the financial forecast, one thing this does is it gives us an opportunity to, uh, prepare for what's coming. Instead of being in a reactive mode, we'll be in a proactive mode to see these things. And so the general fund in twenty twenty-seven drops to three point five million. Uh, that's a little below our twenty-five percent fund balance policy. Um, so we'll be addressing that through this year, we will, we will work to address that, I should say. Um, but as you see, going the years out, that general fund starts to grow back up to eight point five million by twenty thirty-one, um, which is more in line where the village would like to be. Um, ahead of the twenty-five percent fund balance, as well as a ready-made fund or, um, additional reserve fund, if you will, um, for events like COVID, where you're all of a sudden saying, we're not seeing the dollars, um, we need, we need some cushion, uh, protection for that. So I'm gonna do a quick overview of the, of the different funds. Um, the ones that we have in detail, um, I'll kind of gloss over those, um, as each of the directors will be coming up at a later time to, uh, discuss those in detail. The general fund, when you look at the revenues and expenses, uh, there's actually profit of one point three million. When I say profit or surplus, um, that's by design, because if you think, look back at time, the equipment replacement, the capital projects were actually taken from the different apartments, and now they're in their own separate funds, so you need the surplus to, um, to transfer into the, into the capital projects, as well as the equipment replacement fund, so that we can follow those, those larger dollar amounts. Um, the item that I did change, I mentioned earlier, um, from feedback from the, the, uh, trustees, was that they want, they would like to see that the revenues, expenses, they wanted to be able to tell what did the operating revenues versus expenses, leave us in a surplus or deficit, and then show the transfer outs, transfer in, transfer ins and transfer out separate, so that they could tell, like, how well the fund is doing on its own before those transfers occurred. So in this case, you see one point three million with the surplus, but there's transfers out of four million dollars. Three point three million of that is going to the capital projects, and six hundred and sixty thousand is going towards equipment replacement. So the only municipal league, um, they do a really good job at, um, putting out their forecasts for, uh, revenues. And, um, the most recent forecast, and during my, maybe my busy moment, I didn't get a chance to go back and take a look at it, but I most recently did. And now I see that their I M L estimates added another thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars to the fiscal year twenty twenty-six revenues. Um, so that was a positive. Property taxes, I'd just like to mention that the, for fiscal year twenty twenty-five projected year end versus what we're, what we're going to receive in twenty twenty-six, it's a one point seven percent increase in property taxes. It doesn't mean the residence taxes, um, for tax year twenty-four, which is being paid right now at twenty twenty-five, doesn't mean that their taxes, whatever, one point seven. That almost really depends on their assessed valuation, some people may see larger increases, some may see less. Uh, but I'm just telling you that for the village, the money that we're receiving from the county for property taxes is up one point seven percent. The depot parking, this is a smaller fund. The ride ship, park, ridership parking is down, so it's currently about sixty-five hundred dollars a year in revenue. Um, but for expenses, the operating expenses around thirteen thousand, so the annually, the depot parking fund right now is losing around sixty-five hundred dollars. The additional expenses for this year is fifteen thousand for a roof, so the fund balance is limited, three ninety-seven. Depot parking is not a money maker by any means. You have to consider that the, uh, there's also the parking lot. Parking lot is going to be, be replaced, and that's probably about the six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so we will quickly drain this account. Um, the general fund will actually be subsidizing to cover for the cost of that parking lot in the out, in the out years. Public safety, so these are, uh, again, some smaller, smaller accounts that typically these directors not going to be talking about. But the explorers program, they have their own account, uh, there's seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars in the account, and it basically just says, we'll put the whole amount as an expense. They're not gonna spend all the amount, but they have the ability to spend all the amount. Um, there is no expectation that there's locations coming in this year. Um, typically, all they do is purchase some uniforms, so that kind of will end up in positive balance. Public safety DUI. The average, an average amount brought in each year is around the twenty-eight hundred dollars amount, and the fund just typically rose to a point where you say, there's, there's enough money there, maybe we should make a larger purchase. And this year is, uh, we're transferring twenty-five thousand, uh, out of the public safety DUI account to the equipment replacement fund. So we're gonna use some of those dollars for this year. Uh, drug seizure, um, that account, um, there is no expectation that this year they're going to, um, have to have monies coming from drug seizure, uh, but it does happen, sometimes it comes in a larger doubt, larger dollar amount, sometimes it's not sold. Um, this year, the expectation, uh, for expenditures is a hundred five thousand is going towards, uh, body and vehicle cameras, and that one, one hundred and five is only part of the total two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar cost. The other hundred and sixty thousand will be coming from the equipment replacement fund. The motor fuel tax, M F T. Um, revenue six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, uh, the expenditure, the expenditures for this year is, will be six hundred and ninety-five thousand, uh, for the Woods of Antioch, uh, as well, I'm sorry, five hundred and fifty-two thousand for Woods of Antioch, and five hundred and sixty-eight thousand towards the regular street program. The Woods of Antioch is actually, um, going to be a million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred. So the additional six hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred dollars will be coming from the capital projects. The road program will be one point two six million, um, there's an additional six hundred and ninety-six thousand that will be coming from the capital projects, uh, fund as well. Just giving a quick idea, I believe that it, it's around one point one, a little over one point one million for three miles of roads, is what that cost. Um, we, Antioch has around fifty-five, fifty-five miles, I believe. And so, um, when you think about it, um, over a twenty-year period, we replaced all the roads, and so I think that program's going pretty well. And I did note that, uh, the I M L estimate actually added another thirteen thousand to what I originally had in my estimates. This just, uh, wanted to give you a quick visual map of the tip district, so this is the Route eighty-three, kind of see to the far end of, uh, one, Route one seventy-three, and, um, that was not included in the Route eighty-three, the Boyland Tip District, and you see how it runs down, um, Route eighty-three there. The next one is the I D I Tip Districts, which is more commonly called the Corporate Center. Um, that is to the east on one seventy-three, it has the, uh, Andy Foil and the Fisher Paper are located out there. And then the newest is Marketplace, um, and you can see that it goes from the east end of it is the Kia, and heads down towards the other dealerships, but doesn't take in those other dealerships, and that is the Marketplace Tip. A summary of the numbers, the, uh, Tiff Corporate, um, brings in property taxes of a little over two million dollars, and that whole two million dollars actually. And that whole two million dollars actually ends up being dispersed based on business incentive agreements that we have in place with handy foil and Fisher paper. Typically where I'll end up, where I intend to end up is around fifteen thousand dollars in the account. I won't drag it down to zero, but I have to wait to see the math of it all here. Okay, route, route eighty three, Boylan. That has property tax coming in. There's no, there's no planned expenditures at this time, so the, should end up near one hundred and fifty six thousand at the end of the year. Tip marketplace. I did not expect monies were coming in, but most recently we received our first property taxes. So I really was caught off guard with this one. There's an anticipated six thousand nine hundred and ten dollars coming from the incremental property taxes in the tip marketplace. The expenditures. There's fifty thousand ish going towards S B three bin for the financial projections and legal. And fifty thousand and then another, another fifty five thousand was, was set for business incentives. And that's a, that's an error I just recently made. I thought that the sales tax was going to be as a state loan, whether it's going to identify that in the, in the business district. So that kind of threw me off that they did not. It's actually showing in our general sales tax. So I have to make a little correction to move monies from the general fund to the tip marketplace to cover for the business incentive that we have out there. Next item that will be the business districts is the east, east business district. Again, this is Walmart, Bernard's area along one seventy three, includes the Aldi. And the central business district is the largest. It's all that hash lines, kind of goes all over the map there. And you can see within there, within that central business district, it also has a little bit of the route eighty three tip as well as the marketplace tip are included within those boundary lines. The central business district summary. It's, they have a business sales tax. The sales tax for the business districts is for general merchandise. It means that there is no tax for the registered or titled vehicles. Doesn't include the qualifying food, drugs or medical appliance, but yes, fast food is included in the sales tax, in the business district sales tax. There's no expenses, but there is a trans, there is transfers out from each of the business, business districts, which goes towards the guest service fund to cover the twenty twenty two bond, the bond principal and interest payments. So that's how that will transfer. Capital projects, the only revenue there is the Oz live, Oz live grant. And then there's monies being, we're gonna go into those details of how the money's gonna be spent for the capital projects. The money transferred in is ten million, two hundred and fifty thousand from the debt service fund and three point three million coming from the general fund. Equipment replacement, no revenues again. The expenses, police two hundred and forty one thousand and public works four hundred and thirty five thousand. The money is being transferred in from the general fund, as I mentioned earlier, as well as the twenty five thousand from the public safety DUI. Park acquisition is impact fees. There is no planned expenses, so that account should hit around the eighty nine thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Next fund is the debt service fund. What the revenue there is strictly investment income. That is down and I mentioned to each of the trustees that investment income will be down amongst a few of the funds to the tune of six hundred thousand, I think the number was. And it's strictly because of paying these capital project, paying these capital project items from the twenty twenty two bond fund. So there's, will be down, you know, more than ten million dollars. So obviously the investment income will go down as well. The transfer ins I mentioned earlier was central business district and the east business district. And the transfer out is the money's going towards a capital projects. Water and sewer, more details to come, but it has the three percent automatic rate increase that was approved several years ago by board. And Dennis will talk a little more about the operations of that. Police pension fund, there's no decisions to be made by the board. This is strictly me having the police pension. These are included within our budget. And this is, these are the dollars that are being included. We're awaiting the twenty twenty five audit as well as the actuary report, which I anticipate will be coming in two. The actuary report should come in three months, I think, in a level of, of much bigger discussion about police pension and funding of the police pension. And the last item, I believe, is the special service area, which includes deer crest and uplands. Again, no decisions to be made. There's property tax monies coming in and it pays for the debt, the debt of that development as well as forty thousand towards professional services. So those dollars should end up around a million and seven coming into the year. This is where the slides are new to me. Salaries. So for salaries, I had given, I had given you all the, sort of the slide to the left, but I added the departments to it. I previously told you that I didn't have that opportunity to add the names of the departments. And so now you can see the names of the departments and the projected year end of twenty twenty five is six million, eight, eighty eight thousand. And the annual budget for twenty twenty six is six point five million ish. About four, four hundred and nine thousand dollar increase or six point seven. That doesn't mean that everyone's receiving six point seven. Off to the side there, I, I made note of a couple of the positions that I am aware of that are, are being filled that we did not have in twenty twenty five. So there is a H R generalist and the senior accountant has been, senior accountant position has been empty for the former's most five month, five months that I've been here. And I put twenty thousand, it's actually, should have been twenty six thousand, my bad. Police, police clerk position being filled, fifty two thousand as well as a water operator, operator position, sixty thousand. And so when you take off those positions that are being filled, that we didn't have those dollar amounts expended in twenty twenty five, it brings the increase to more of a hundred and ninety five thousand or three point two percent. I will tell you that this is not a perfect apple, apple comparison again because of me. I'm included in this that the, and I'll talk more about it later. But you have contractors that were, contractors that were being paid under professional services versus out of salaries. And so that does have a bearing on the numbers. So I'm not comfortable saying like this is a complete apple, apple comparison. But given that we decided to tackle this today, I thought, okay, let's put it out there and to get you a starting point on where we, where the salaries were and where they're headed.
Michael, only question on the road program, when you're talking about the capital, was the six hundred thousand rebuild Illinois money already in that capital, those capital dollars that we're using for Woods of Antioch?
So Woods of Antioch, the rebuild Illinois dollars, those are in the M F T fund. And Dennis keeps really, really good track of it. And so that's why we had to take a specific amount from the M F T account and the balance coming from the capital projects. We could, we could not exceed a very exact dollar amount like that. And so those dollars are all included in that M F T account.
Thank you. Let me do the short straw.
Sorry, can I ask a question, Michael? As you see, I waited till he sat down. I noticed when you're talking about the SSAs, there's money sitting in the SSAs. Even though at the end of the year, the, it's got a low balance in there. Why is that money sitting in the SSAs?
So I don't know the eligible expenditures of the SSA in, I think you just said it with a low balance. It's one point seven million. So the surplus was four thousand dollars, but the actual fund balance is one point seven million. So that will take some research to see. I was thinking that this, these dollars were actually covered, we had the dollars on hand for the year coming to pay the debt. So that's why I think this account works, that you have the monies on hand to make the, to make the coming years. So we don't have the all property tax dollars received yet. So to be sure that you have it, I think the dollars come in a year in advance of the debt payment.
Okay, I, I would appreciate if you looked that up and see if that's correct. I mean, I, I think the same thing. It's money we're accumulating to pay off when we have to make our yearly payments towards the SSA bonds. Also, onto the salaries. You, you had a six point seven percent increase. Are there individuals getting higher amounts than six point seven percent or is it a equal across the board? Six point seven percent? Or are there some people getting two percent and some getting higher than six point seven? Or, or are people getting higher raises and we're taking salaries that aren't being paid to other paces to, to pay into those raises?
So as I mentioned, that it would appear that it's six point seven percent, but actually when you consider the filling of positions that weren't paid for in twenty twenty five that are being added for twenty twenty six, it brought the number down to more like three point two percent. But I did give all the trustees, mayor, a complete listing of all the salaries for every employee by every department. So off the top of my head, I think there were three. What was the number? Three, three of the higher, so six point seven. I don't know the number off the top of my head. I grabbed my sheet, but.
I can think of probably four, Michael.
I, I can think about four or five also that were, were significantly higher percentage. And I can think of, as in the police department, you, you're losing Norm Johnson. So his salary is being spread among other officers or positions to, to increase. And so instead of being a savings, we're, we're spreading the money around.
So for the police, in the, in the salaries, pages that I had handed out to everybody, I do have in there promote sergeant to commander and promote officer to sergeant. Because I, I wasn't going to assume how this was playing out, who was being moved or promoted into which positions. So no, I did not put those dollars to any specific person that it would stand out that so and so received a greater amount because of that promotion. This, this document was really more for me to, for budgeting purposes, but I could see how it's helpful for the discussion. And so looking through, you asked for everything greater than six point six, seven. Let's see, one. Two. So some people, some people, to your point, moved from part time to full or had promotional differences. I see three so far. Four, two, one. Well, the police are all union contracts. Five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Yeah, you can, you can leave, you're, you're right. The police are a contract amount. And, and the point I'm getting at, and this is probably more for a board discussion, is I believe we should be paying our employees fairly. And I believe they should, should get decent raises because they do work hard for us. But I think the raise amount should be approved by the board, not just added into the budget. And it should be a fair across the board raise to everybody. And I don't see that happening in this. I think there's some assumptions that previous, previous salary studies or, or, or planning were just automatically being included in this. I, I think the board should have approval over, over the raises, not having them added into the budget and just automatically happening because the budget's been approved.
Yep, yeah.
So, trustee Pierce, if I could just add some additional context to how some of these numbers were arrived at. Just to ensure the board, the community that they weren't arrived at arbitrarily. So there was a three percent cost of living increase incorporated into the salaries and wages across the board, which is why you're probably seeing that number average up to somewhere near three point two percent based off of Michael's calculations. But just, just as a refresher for the board, and I know, I know you recall this because you were on the board at the time. But there was a compensation study and a compensation plan that was presented with the board back in two thousand twenty two. And the purpose of that at the time was to provide some kind of context to how people were gonna move through salary ranges, define a specific structure and outline a responsible path forward. So we're not in a position where we're, we're just arbitrarily awarding increases that may be viewed as inappropriate within, within public dollars. So as you, as you recall in twenty two, the board was presented a rather comprehensive salary analysis that was using twenty twenty one market data. And then we began applying that at the time to make sure that we were ensuring internal equity and, and create a sustainable and consistent compensation framework for our employees. As you know, we, there was updated presentation by, by an independent company brought forward before the board earlier this year. I know that there's some dissenting opinions, but so subsequently did not move forward with that updated data. But, but in being responsible with the compensation plan, it's always a living, breathing document, right? It's not something that you can just establish and just be stagnant because market conditions and, and employability factors change. So when that, that revised study was rejected by the board, we went back to the original plan that was approved by the board in twenty twenty two and made what we felt were reasonable adjustments to the established wage ranges at that time. So we accounted for a cost of living factor that was approved by the board in the budget of three percent in two thousand twenty three and three point five percent in two thousand twenty four, for a total increase within those ranges of approximately six point five percent. And we're looking at that with the C P I within this, within our zip code over the last couple of years. You're actually looking at a total of about a ten point three delta increase. So our increases are still below what the, the overall cost of living factors are in our, in our, in our general area. So the problem, if you don't make some of those adjustments within those ranges, you just allow them to remain stagnant, is you have employees that remain at the bottom of their range. So just using very simple numbers, an employee is hired at fifty thousand dollars and a three percent increase is approved. Those ranges in time shift as well, as I mentioned, it's a living, breathing document. So over the course of five years, if there's not adjustments for, you know, what we would call in the police world, step increases made within those ranges. By ten years down the road, the employee is still the minimum range of their salary, right? And when they're coming on board, they're looking at, I'm making fifty thousand dollars today, but I know over the course of my career within this role, maybe I'll be making seventy five thousand dollars in ten years. So as any increases that you see beyond that three percent threshold are in line with that compensation plan as people are moving through the ranges and compensated in force with the plan that was approved by the board back in twenty two. And of course, you know, there's some abnormalities, like there's some, some specific employment agreements and whatnot that were approved of course over the last couple of years that kind of throw that nexus off just a little bit. But I just wanted to give some historical context to where those numbers came from, how we got to the current numbers today and how the employers are moving through the ranges. Really, and what, what is the consistent status that you would see throughout the municipal law?
I, I appreciate the, the historic. I I appreciate the the historical update. If I remember correctly, I was kind of the Eeyore then, and I'm probably the Eeyore now on this subject. So I I just don't believe in automatic things occurring. Automatic tax increases, automatic salaries, I think they should be controlled and approved by the board. That's that's just my philosophy. I mean, I have to explain them to the taxpayers who live in a civilian world and have salary increases like I do, which are, you know, locked to the CPI and or or even less depending upon how well the company's doing. If it's doing great, we get good raises. If it's doing bad, we get, you know, we may not get any raises. So I think it's just something we should have as a discussion every year at the board.
Very fair assessment, trustee. I don't I don't believe overall we deviate too far from that. You know, again, we're talking relatively small percentage of our employees throughout the A plus employees we have throughout the village. And on the other hand, when market times have been tough, you know, I've been here for 26 years. There's been years that we've been done with no raise because of those market conditions. You know, you mentioned your 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 specific situation being tied to CPI. But as I mentioned, the ranges that most of our employees are seeing are actually below CPI. So we're following below those overall market conditions that many of the private the the private sector uses for benchmarking increases. So they were using relatively conservative values overall. I just wanted to reassure you that, you know, we're not, you know, we're just not not throwing good money after bad and trying to compensate what really is our most valuable resource.
And I just want to address one point, valid point. You said that you'd like to have a discussion about the salaries instead of being included within the budget. And what I had mentioned earlier was that next year, the process will be that we're going to discuss the capital projects and the equipment replacement, then salaries. And we're we're looking to propose to the board that we have a salary ordinance or salary range that you will discuss and have decided upon before we get to the budget. So when I'm going to do the budget, you'll have already discussed the capital projects, the equipment replacement and the salaries. And the only thing left then would be the operations, which should make this whole process a little easier. Instead of it kind of overwhelming you with everything all at once, you're going to see it in three different pieces until you get to the final numbers. So I think that that should be helpful going forward. I apologize for this year, but I was a little late to the game.
I think trustee Peterson had a question.
I don't have a question as much as I want to respond. How many? I I do have a question. How many people did we lose last year?
Twenty five, I'm sorry. Twenty three this last year?
Twenty three people. How many people do we have to lose? We need to stay competitive with our salaries, or we're not going to have people working for us. And I don't agree. I I like what Michael, what you just said about doing it incrementally. We're going to be able to see these things as they as you work through your budget. So that's great. But as far as the board seeing the salaries and and going through each employee, what do we have a village administrator for? We're micromanaging at that point, and and we can't do that. We weren't elected to do that. And we are our trustees. We do not get into the meat and potatoes of the workings every day in the village. That's not our job. And I I think what you're proposing is to give us help throughout the year, understanding where we are and where we're going with salaries. That's great. But when we get to, like I said, the meat and potatoes, we need to stay out of that and trust the people that we have working here. And I think we need to stay competitive with these salaries, or we're going to lose everybody. You know, we're just, it's it's a constant revolving door. Dennis even told us. He trains these people, they're hired, he gets them trained, they work first for six to eight years, and somebody hires them away with all that experience, and we have to start over. And it happens over and over and over. And I've seen enough of it. So I really want to stay competitive with these salaries. Maybe we're going to have to cut something else, but not salaries. That's all I'd just say.
Your your honor, may I respond?
Yeah, and I think trustee Mason then heads up to say, okay, so trustee Peters, trustee Mason, and trustee Boothard.
I agree, we need to treat our employees fairly and try to keep our employees. But I I come from the real world, and in the real world, employees, I hate to say it, they come and they go. To continue to throw dollars sometimes isn't the the most effective thing. Some of those twenty three employees that left this year, left under very favorable condition conditions for themselves, retirement and pension wise, at the expense of our taxpayers. And other employees made their decisions to move on, and I've learned everybody is replaceable. So yes, we need to take care of our employees, we need to pay them fairly. But we also need to have an eye on things such as in this budget where we've got seventeen percent salary increases. I'm sorry, I don't come from a world where seventeen percent salary increases really work. So I I'm just giving you a different viewpoint. But I appreciate what you said, trustee Peterson.
Trustee Mason?
There's there's two two ways I'll speak loudly. You've stated we've got the road program fifty five miles every twenty years. I just want to make sure we got Dennis new budgeted program for the underground roads to be replaced. So that's somewhere in, I remember, in miles of sewer water, we have probably three, four times white lines, and we got some type of plan for the underground roads.
So the bargains in the slumbers, since we're here. And so I think the number was like seventy one miles of water. And so I think since 2027, that we begin spending thirty thousand. We put another, we'll be out.
It's it's in the.
And so there, this year, I think the bandwidth, they they don't have the time actually to get into that. They've got so much on their plate that they have to quickly get that done this year, even if we do dollars. So we have to build up for 2027 and get on pace. Say in six, you want the liner, the sewer lining, hundred twenty thousand.
And the second second comment I'll make is everybody else who wants to vote their budget, they were for for your property taxes and your property taxes. If you use the rule of seven, everybody goes up five percent every year in property taxes, it's going to start getting unsustainable beginning of the new millennium. I'm at fourteen thousand right now for my taxes. So the rule is seventy two, twelve years, I'm I'm having a vaccine in twenty eight. So I think this board should have a conversation with the other governing boards. What are you guys doing? It can't be just us who want to pay public, public safety, police officers, public works, you know, good money for their good talent to be rose. That's where the majority of the tax bill comes. Also, we got to look at, I took the question, what's what's the impact fees? The buyer, library, school, which most trustees didn't know, which is also a tax. So I think that's all that I've brought to the board. We should have intergovernmental conversations. This five percent is just going to be unsustainable for the average person, especially retired.
Just to as a response that I recently, I don't know, a month, month and a half ago, I went with the assessor Lee Perry and kind of discussed this item specifically. So next Wednesday, I am meeting with Lee Michaels there, Lee Perry, myself, the administrator, and all of the taxing bodies have accepted my invitation to come and discuss this item. So and then, you know, bring it to the board. Yeah, so it's a very good point because Lee did a ten year projection and it needs to be discussed. So that is a real thing. Trustee Boothard?
See, salaries are a hard hard issue to discuss, especially in public, because they impact people that could be in this room, that people know, that work for us, and everybody knows. So I'm not going to go down a route of trying to figure out who got a higher salary or whatever for the various reasons. But my concern is that we, at that meeting that the administrator talked about, where we kind of all agreed that that study was not good, we didn't want to go down that route with the study. I don't think, at least I know, I didn't realize that that meant that if we didn't go with that study, we were going back to the study from four years ago or whenever that original, 2022, that we approved it, but 2021 study. I just don't like this lump sum big increases to try to meet some phantom range that was designed four years ago. That's my problem with that. I think people's salaries, as trustee Peters mentioned, should be based on their performance and and everything else. There's an individual that deserves a twenty percent raise, so be it. If we can afford it, they should get it. But just to give an employee the blanket raise, because if we do an average of six villages around us, their employee in that role averages out more than what ours is, I don't agree with it. I think that's a bad way of moving forward. So I know this this budget is pretty much set, I understand that. But I think we need to have a serious discussion about salaries moving forward. And I disagree, trustee Peterson, we are responsible for these salaries and we should be involved in this because when it comes time for the residents and the citizens of Annapolis are upset about these things, they're not going to come and and knock on the administrator's door, the department head's door. They're going to come knocking on ours and say, now, why is this person making so much? Or why is this happening? But why are our property taxes so much? So we need to be involved, at least at the department head level, and then let the department heads figure out their salaries for their employees below them. I just have a big concern when I see the big percentage increases like we have in this one, we've had it in prior budgets. I don't like the flat raise. That's what I get at my work. It's the most irritating thing in the world. You can do all the best, you can do your best job, you can meet all your goals, do everything, and then you get the same amount as a guy that shows up late every day and doesn't do his job half the time. So I think we need to have some flexibility in this, you know, talk to the administrator about it, like the mayor about it. We we need to do a different style of salary raises moving forward. I'll live with this this year, but I think moving forward, we need to have a more intense look at how we determine how the employees' salaries are determined. And I do agree, a lot of it's going to fall on the department heads because they're the ones that work with these people on a daily basis. So whether that's us as a board saying, okay, we're going to do, wait, is that I don't like the flat? Let's say it's a flat three percent raise, but because we have extra money in the budget or we have the funds available, you know, here's an extra fifty thousand dollars, you can distribute among your employees in your department. And maybe that's how we do it. And then that way, the department head can figure out who who's deserving, who earned extra salary. But I just don't want to see us, I will not vote after, it's not going to stop me on this one. But moving forward, if there's any increases that are just because of some phantom range that was designed by someone outside of us, I will not vote for a budget moving forward after this year with that type of salary increase. They have to be justifiable, merit based, economy based, and make sure that we can afford it. Because as you see in those numbers, our budget is going to start shrinking down here real quick over the next three or four years. And if we don't kind of control our spending and make sure what we're spending is 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 at the right level, we're going to run into a situation where we're not going to be worrying about what the raises are going to be, how many employees are going through.
And I, yeah, I could appreciate that. And I, as I said, I'm I'm the director at the Lake County Municipal League with other mayors and are to congressmen and other people, and they ask me what are the biggest issues we face? And they're both economic related, obviously, one with the cost of infrastructure, goods, inflation, and the others, you know, with the wages and how our villages are stealing employees from each other. And so I agree, even in going back to my personal business practice, you know, after COVID, the world changed ridiculously in this arena as well. Somebody I could hire for fifty thousand dollars three or three years ago, I'm probably having to pay eighty thousand dollars now just because of the the job market and the inflation that we've faced over the last four years. I'm hoping after this year, as I said, I can appreciate or agree that I don't like this. Everybody's a robot and they fall into this chart, and you're paying everybody the same, whether they show up to work late or put in the extra hours. So I really appreciate some kind of a merit based element to this. I would suggest when we go forward, that we look at something where we say the ranges are, you know, two percent to four percent or two percent or five percent, and anything over that would have to get like specific board approval. That's would seem to make more sense. I think we're hitting the reset button just based on the strange world we've lived in in the last couple of years, and hopefully that's calming down. So but I would appreciate, yes, going forward, we do that because somebody like Laurie, who's here, you know, late into the night, you know, want to take that into account versus somebody that maybe calls in, you know, once or twice a week unexpectedly. So I I agree with everything that's being said here on both sides of it. But it's a real problem, especially in the police world. I mean, if you look at police and public works, people are picking off people left and right. So and our front office staff, same thing, we've lost a couple of office staff. And not to put any names out there, but we recently lost somebody who had been here for many, many years and had hired a replacement, automatically are paying more day one for that person, lose all the institutional knowledge, the training. And so that's what we have to be conscious of.
Well, here's here's the point, for the last Jim Kind never did performance reviews. You can't go back and look at someone and say, what did that guy do the last five years? No, he hasn't had a performance review under Jim Kind. Jim Kind didn't do nothing. No one cared. Hold on, no one, nobody's parking lot that Jim Kind, we approved a hundred thousand, and and it's not even.
I agree. That that's all water under the bridge of this.
I understand, but moving forward, you got to do a performance review.
But I I agree. I think there, I think for me, coming from the private world, there has to be a merit based element to this and 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 give the workers that are going above and beyond that extra, even if it's a half percent. You know, I know, for instance, Kim works at Abbott, and they say everyone gets four percent, but they take a half percent from some of the ones that aren't doing it and give a half a percent to the ones who are working harder. You know, that's kind of still a little bit too robotic for me, but you know, it's a way to think about it.
Yeah, and that's a fair assessment. I've had conversations several months before about my desire to eventually move the organization towards a performance or merit based increase. But we have to also recognize that certain costs come with that, too. I've had conversations with other municipalities that have been able to make that transition and speaking with their administrators. And kind of the way it works is you, this cost of living increase establishes the baseline, right? Let's just say that's two percent or three percent or whatever the number may be based on, on the the cost of living factors that are applied. But to make to make a merit based increase meaningful for most individuals, you have to establish a range that's going to help move them from that range, right? If you say you get a a three percent cost of living and then eligible for a one percent merit increase, right? There's not a lot of incentive for those really hard workers to go above and beyond for an additional one percent. So usually what most communities do is they'll establish that baseline increase. So if you say it's three percent, then they'll establish a merit rating between an additional three to five percent, right? So the board would just have to be prepared for the fact that you may see numbers that exceed that six percent overall increase by implementation of a merit increase. If you have everybody that performs very highly now. In these conversations, the administrators say not everybody is at that high range, right? But you get a fair evaluation system in place to make sure that the raises are being applied appropriately. Most people fall within that mid range, right? Then you have your five or 10 percent of your exceptional employees that hit the top, and then you have your five or 10 percent of your lower performing employees that get banned out to the bottom. So usually falls out of that midpoint of about that three percent, but on top of the cost of living, you're you're between five to eight percent overall for your hero.
And I I don't know if there's precedent to this, but you know, as we go down this discussion, I would be interested maybe having a a small bonus pool because once you raise somebody's salary, it never goes down. But a bonus pool is a one time thing where you can, you know, give somebody a little extra based on performance. Something to think about.
Yes.
All right, so. Get back up there, Jim. Your turn.
Good evening, Mayor Village Board, residents, I'm here tonight, I'm Jim Moran, Assistant Village Administrator, and I'm here tonight to discuss our. Uh, village administration and the elected officials portion of the budget. Uh, before I get into this, I, I just wanted to shed some light onto this whole budget process. Uh, Michael, for those of you who are probably aware, started with us at the beginning of the year. Uh, I remember it was the day of December, Michael came in for his training and to get up to speed, and he spent four hours. Um, kind of getting institutional knowledge from his predecessor and, and, uh, beginning of January, jumped right in. Uh, putting in seven-day work weeks, you know, very long days. Um, in the, the amount of time it would have taken me just to get the, you know, IDs on our bank logins transferred over. Uh, Michael has a pretty solid working knowledge of, uh, every aspect of the village in four months. Uh, so it's quite an incredible feat to get up to speed and then create a whole new budgeting process, which gives us. A very detailed budget and also a five-year look ahead, which is, uh, which is great, this is an outstanding budget process to be a part of and. Next year is only gonna get better, so thank you, Michael, and also we have. What, three or two other department heads that also started at the beginning of the year that had to jump into a new process where. They weren't really able to be shown what to do because none of us really knew exactly, you know. Uh, how this was all gonna come together so quickly, so it was a lot of flexibility on our, uh, new department heads as well, so thank you guys. So, on to the, this part of the budget, so the administrative and non-departmental and elected officials portion of the budget. Um, consists of the, the elected officials portion of the budget, which is you guys. Uh, for village administration, that would be village administrator, myself, our communications contractor that we're working with. Also, um, our business liaison and our economic development portion of the village. Also IT is in there, however, Amy has her own budget presentation that she'll be presenting, so. Uh, that's why she's not listed there, so this is the stuff I'll be going over. Uh, then also our village clerk's office, I'll be presenting Laurie's portion of the budget as well. So what, what I wanted to do was, uh, looking at the details of the budget, I just wanted to pull out some of the things that you guys might have questioned over. That I thought stood out, obviously if you have other questions or need anything else from me, let me know. Uh, but some of the increases that we see under your portion of the budget involve an increase related to IML. Um, I think, I think we have four or five, um, elected officials budgeted for IML this fall. Is, you're probably aware, some years we have four or five elected officials go, uh, some years we have one. Sometimes it's people just coming down for dinner and it varies, so we thought this would, you know, a slight increase would be good to, to. Be, um, conservative with our budget estimate with that. A pretty significant portion of the budget that we saw increase was our commission meeting expense, um, there's a seventeen thousand dollar line item there. Um, I, I think, uh, previously it was. A, a lot less than that. So, uh, like, uh, the year we're ending, we're gonna end up with just under a ten thousand dollar expense with that line item. And the reason why it's significantly more is we decided to take the approach of. Every commissioner that sits on planning and zoning or parks commission or whatever, it's eighty dollars a meeting. And what we wanted to do was plan out a full year of meetings with a full board, meeting every month, and, and that's something we've never budgeted that way. Previous budgets has just been, well, we spent X amount last year, we'll throw in a few extra bucks, uh, so to have a more accurate. Uh, anticipation of if we have a full year of meetings with all our, uh, commissioners. It would be substantially more than what we've spent in the past, and as you guys know, we have parks commission meetings that get canceled or planning zoning. If there's not business, that sort of thing, and we don't expect that expense to in reality be that high, but. The appropriate budget for it, um, in case we do have full meetings. Our downtown beautification, excuse me, is slightly more than, uh, what was budgeted this past year. Uh, the increases include, um, downtown public art, which, whether we add more murals down, or, I'm sorry, more ghost signs downtown. Or murals, or some sort of public art project with the business community downtown. We wanted to make sure to have money budgeted there, and also a street banner program, which in the past, I, I think my first two years, we had budgeted for that. And never actually spent the money, uh, working with, uh, Kim Biederman, our business liaison specialist. Uh, she's really interested to spearhead that this year to get some new banners for Maine and Lake in our downtown business districts, uh, so we. Added that to the budget, and then finally parade candy, um, making sure we have enough appropriate amount of money budgeted for our parades in town. So if we go on to the village administration portion, uh, we see increases, uh, now that we have. A village administrator slotted in the role, we have an assistant village administrator, we have the, the department filled up. Um, backward, um, you know, what will be the standard level for the foreseeable future. Uh, we have increased costs related to IL CMA and IML, um, conferences and memberships. Uh, our village administrator will be joining IL CMA, there's two conferences here with that that are, I've been attending that are very beneficial. Another line item that saw a significant increase was professional dues, uh, we saw that because. Uh, the Visiting Lake County membership, which is just under sixteen thousand dollars a year that we pay to be a member of Visiting Lake County. Uh, was under community development and it's one of the things that bounces around our budget. Uh, through the years and we thought more appropriate places in the village administration portion of professional dues. Excuse me, then under econ, uh, the, the next line item, uh, some of the, the highlights include economic development advertising. This is another thing that has moved from one portion to the budget to this portion, uh, we've had a advertising budget for the village. What we did is split it where twenty-five thousand is going towards economic development, the rest towards events and other village promotion. Our legal services, the budget for this, this budget number has actually gone down, we've negotiated with our legal counsel and. And we're actively looking at ways to save money here, uh, but this is a line item I know. Every budget meeting I've ever sat in with the municipality, that, that's an area of people look at, so I wanted to make sure to highlight that number for you. And also, finally, uh, we're budgeting fifty-four thousand dollars a year to continue. Uh, with our communications contractor, uh, that we're currently working with on a three-month trial, uh, deal. Uh, so that full contract will come before you, if, if, you know, we, we get through the three-month trial. Uh, that'll come before you probably the second week of June to, to move forward on a permanent basis for that. And then the village clerk portion of the slide. Uh, one of the things I wanna highlight is Laurie, our village clerk, um, not only is an exceptional, uh, employee here that. Gets a tremendous amount of work done, the institutional knowledge that she has from being here from the mid-nineties. Uh, is, that alone is a very valuable resource, um, Laurie is often here late at night and early in the morning. And, um, it's, she's a tremendous asset for the village, so thank you, Laurie. Uh, so some of the things that she's been working on this past fiscal year, um, publishing RFPs. Uh, for selecting a new, uh, insurance broker for property and casualty insurance. The human resource aspect of her job, trustee Peterson brought this up, uh, we had twenty-three employees exit last year. Nineteen new employees hired, so that's nineteen interview processes. And onboarding processes that we've had to go through, three exit interviews or approximately. Uh, that alone is a tremendous amount of work, uh, we still have some open positions right now, including a special event supervisor. Public, uh, the police academy recruits and a HR, uh, function as well. And Laurie's been down a person in her department, we had our deputy clerk leave last summer. We hired a HR specialist who, just as soon as she got the training wheels off, left. And other than that, Laurie's been on her own, so she's been doing a two-person job basically since last summer. Uh, and part of her position is FOIA, uh, requests in the calendar year of twenty twenty-four. For a process of four hundred and thirty-four FOIA requests for the village.
That should probably go down, I assume. That should probably go down now, I assume.
So moving on to the village clerk budget. A couple of the highlights, uh, shredding for document destruction after one of the things that Laurie is good about is. Making sure we don't throw anything away that we're not supposed to, uh, so we go through a process of boxing up documents and then Laurie gets moved. From the state, uh, for us to dispose of them and then reshred them, uh, we also scanning some of the in-engineering files. That you see, we have rooms that are full of boxes of engineering files that are in the process of being scanned in and digitalized. Uh, also our laser piece contract, uh, their laser pieces, the repository where we keep a lot of the digital documents that we scan in. Uh, the renewal of that is included in here, the price has gone up slightly, also we're increasing the number of users from eighteen to twenty-one total users. And, that's all I've got, uh, for right now.
Angie has to get us moved over to the new building, right? All those boxes. Any questions for, about the administrator budget? Alright, good job.
Great, thank you, I'll be up after.
Hello, I love doing this so much. Um, I'm Amy Pashoto, the IT manager for the village. I'm a staff with one, um, and I report to, uh, Jim Moran, he's the village administrator. Um, my department also gets assistance from, um, a co-managed IT contract provider that comes in eight hours a week. That was approved by the board, um, earlier, uh, late last year, and then we do have a separate support provider that does. Uh, support the wastewater treatment plant, um, and that's built on just kind of material that comes out of their budget. So I just wanna go over, we do have ten separate locations that I do support. And our, um, primary data center is located at the police department right now. That will be separating as village hall moves, right now we do have everything over there. Uh, we are connected via fiber, that's no longer going to be the case, so that's another agenda item coming up after this one. Uh, so, uh, we have a lot of different Comcast connections and firewalls and servers, so. This is just kind of going over each location and the various, uh. You know, uh, technologies at each location, so we don't have to go through them all, just kind of a highlight, so. Um, you know, we have parks and recreation, public works, and the former senior center all has their connectivity through the parks and recreation. Wastewater and the water department has their own network. And then we also have the aquatic center, the van shell, Sequoie Creek Park and the metro station that we also have connectivity to and cameras and various equipment. So, my department goal this year is just to survive the year. Um, there are a lot of projects in other departments, so there aren't really any in my department. Some of the projects include, uh, moving from Suncom to Lakecom, which is anticipated to happen in July. Right now it's tentatively to be scheduled when both Commander Garcia and myself are on vacation, so. Uh, we are praying that that gets scheduled for the following week, um, there is the relocation of village hall. Um, and then we also have in, the phone system that was in last year's budget was put on hold. Uh, so it is reflected in this year's budget, um, that was due to issues with. Having it integrate with Suncom. So now that we're moving to Lakecom, that is going to be a much easier integration with their systems. Uh, then there's also the financial software migration to BSNA that's going live in October. And then, um, with the budget approval and with the grant, uh, there's the in-squad video and bodyborne camera system, so. With a staff of one, me, myself and I are going a little, uh, chaotic in the head here with these projects, so we will get through it. Um, but with that, some of the project highlights include. Including another block of time with DeKind to assist me with some of these, it includes one hundred hours. And it's just to help me set up the village hall network. And some of these others, because it's, it's not gonna happen with just that eight hours a week, it, 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 there's just no way. Um, that we could be, we would be able to accomplish it. Um, and then also as part of this is. We did not use that ten thousand dollars that I had in there for the phone system migration to the cloud. Uh, so that was rolled over and is reflected in this year's budget as well. So that's the highlights for the consultants. And then for the software licensing and updates, I just wanna note that there is an increase for both. No one, which is our endpoint security and our remote management and monitoring software for the endpoints. Because as part of the transition from Suncom to Lakecom, we will be getting. Uh, the seventeen MDTs will become our responsibility, right now they're through ETSB. So with that, that includes the additional devices. Also, as part of, uh, the contract with DeKind that we had, they were. Their billing is usually on an annual starting January first of every year. Because of when we approved their contract, they worked with us because we did not have it in last year's budget. Uh, so we were able to go month to month, so this year there is from. May one till December, through December, and then we'll do an annual payment of January first, so there is a little bit of a catch-up there. So there is that increase as well. And then again, we do have the phone system as part of this one, uh, I have started to get, um. The proposals and I'm going to be scheduling demos, we are looking to also do this in the July, August timeframe. Uh, one of the ones that we are looking at is, is adding on the Microsoft Teams to love any to our existing Microsoft three sixty-five licensing. Along with lots of other options out there, just to see which one will meet our needs the best. Um, and that is it, any questions?
Any questions? At least nobody knows your job better than me, so. Alright, uh, communications, next.
Thank you, Mayor Board, uh, this will be brief, uh, we have a short part of the communications budget that is still part of the, and then. The administrative budget, um, also like I mentioned earlier, the communications contractor. Is also part of the communications budget, which, a couple years ago, this was all over the, my former position, so we still have, uh. Some advertising that is part of the administrative budget, this is for village promotion, concert event advertising, a lot of the parks programming and stuff. Uh, the, the promotional budget comes out of this part of the budget, also printing, uh, with our. Communications contractor, we're planning to do, uh, to get back on schedule for two in-home, uh, like snail mail. Um, newsletters from the village, uh, we're also, and I'll get into this in my administrator, the, the assistant administrator report. Uh, but we're also starting an e-newsletter tomorrow that will come out twice a month. Uh, and then finally, um, some of the photography and graphic design, um, things that have been in other parts of the budget that are consolidated.
Questions? Alright, thank you, Michael, you're back.
The, the finance, finance staff, um. Doesn't show the finance director because I am not salary, I am a contractor, so it doesn't show me on there, but, um, we can link up all the other positions. That full string, um, when it comes to salary benefits, um, contractual, so this is where I was telling you, like, the apple-to-apple comparison is just not there. Because of, like, my, my payment is under a contract, contractual, given resources versus salary. So I combine salaries, benefits and the contractual all together, so it gives you more of the apple-to-apple comparison, so from twenty-five to twenty-six. The increase is about eight thousand dollars, one point six percent, um, I am, I am a portion of that. Um, what you were, what you were, former finance director, um, salary benefits. Um, I make five thousand dollars a year, and you consider salary benefits. When you consider salary benefits versus my contractual payment. Um, and I have a two percent increase every year, so. The accomplishments, um, is that more in my eyes? Okay. I told you the slides were new to me too, so go ahead, back. I'm okay. So, no, you can go to the, I thought you had two other slides, actually. On this. Nope, okay. Saving you, saving you. The slides, I guess. So in my, in my budget, uh, it looks like a five point nine percent increase, but I can tell you that um I've had had recent discussion with the auditors and that we will not, we will not be to um uh, do work towards a couple of the standards. Um, one is Civita, um, software. You know that one? Software, so.
Fast Software as a Service?
No, it's, it's um IT agreement, software business. And Civita is now business uh information technology agreement. Software as a whole, I think, but it's still leasing software. And then compensated the app. We think that, you know, the, will be immaterial. And so that the auditors are saying that we probably won't have to do those. And then the ARPA reporting, there is a number, uh, but we, um, it was a chosen alternative uh, alternative auditing versus what would be single audit. And so there should be a savings on that as well. So I'm expecting six thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars less expenditure. So on to the accomplishments. So twenty twenty-five, I did mention that I terminated ClearGov Software, so that was a fifteen thousand four hundred fifty dollars savings annually. Did introduce a few different uh new reports. The uh Hume reports are the ones that are um specific to people responsible for specific line items within the budget. Um, the McGory monthly comparison report of revenues expenses. So I try to make the reporting to the directors more specific to them instead of saying, like, here's the bill list. There's twenty-one pages. Find your bills, please review them. Um, I send them the bill list specific to them or that their name and it shows exactly which invoices are being paid this upcoming bill run um, that are specific to them and have a better chance of overview those. Um, and we're trying to cut down on classification errors, so um they, they'll call, call me back and say, hey, I think we decoded that wrong. And we'll make the correction more timely. The goals for uh twenty twenty-six. The assets and infrastructure reporting, which is part of the auditing, is sort of time-consuming, so it's going to take a little effort with that. Um, I did mention the bad debt write-off that we had at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, though we do need to review that policy and um go back to working on the collections uh effort um that we previously had with the state of Illinois. Uh, BSNA software um deployment, uh, that's a big lift for us. And um the annual, there's annual licensing savings, about ten thousand dollars versus what we were paying to um G-Works or Simcity. And better payments by ACH, this is going to be big for us. Currently, most are paid by check. Um, and we can start to make direct deposits to these vendors, and the vendors are asking for it, um, but they direct deposit to the ACH. Um, this cuts down um the printing of the checks, the posting of them, um, the lost checks that occur. Um, when it comes to bank reconciling, it's like a single item and knocking out all those at one time versus check cleared, check cleared, check cleared. And so looking for some time savings with that, that's going to work out well for us. Budget book twenty twenty-seven, obviously, we're going to work to improve the process, uh, the narratives, the graphics. Um, a lot of this came together at the very last moment, so I know that we got some errors, as I mentioned. Now, as I look at the screens, um, I noticed a few things. Casual forecasting, that's a big item for this um twenty twenty-six because we have so much money that's um being paid out that I need to get a, go to handle on the investments and when they're maturing. Make sure that I have the money's available to make those payments. Don't want to, and our public banks have been great. Um, if I need to cash in uh CDs in advance, they said that they will not assess penalties to the village of Antioch, so much appreciated. Um, skip into the links and uh credit card fees. So I'm not sure you would be aware of this, but currently the village is paying the fees when residents use their credit cards. And I can tell you that credit, the credit card payments is the most costly way for residents to pay uh for us, um, the staff time involved in that and the reporting of it, reconciling for bank reconciling. As well, we're paying that actual fee. If, what we need to do is be pushing the um direct, automatic withdrawal from the um residents. That is the cheapest way to collect money. And it cuts down the whole staff, um, the staff processing time. Um, it's, it's just great. Um, when I was at Lincoln Chair, I left there, they were at fifty-five percent plus. It was when the fifty-five percent of residents tried auto, auto withdrawal. And they had one person at the counter. I mean, you could see savings. Talking about staffing and that, and not that we would be cutting staff, but we were staffed to other duties instead of just waiting for those customer payments. And we maybe change credit card processors and that needs to be reviewed. The, I'm, I'm very big on documentation, so I work hard at documenting the timeline as well as procedures for doing the audit, the budget, the property tax levy. So when it comes time to me exiting, um, and I'm handing it off to um my predecessor, I would be able to hand those, hand that person the instructions as to how I went about it. Right now, I'm literally able to go through files and files, trying to figure out what was done in the past and then try to see, okay, see how they did that piece. Um, you know, yeah, I've been at it for forty years. Um, I told me, I'm, today she's like, it's like riding a bike. You'll do fine today. And I said, okay. I feel more like it's riding a bike, but the bike's on fire. I'm going downhill. They have the brakes. So we have our tough days.
We're talking about the job, not the budget, right? Right, budget was it.
Budget was a phrase. Um, digitizing records is another very important time saver for us. Uh, people feel like, oh, you're going to scan documents. That's going to take more time. No, you have no idea what it's like to have to get up, go over to all these paper files, and then try to find something and retrieve it. Um, this is about transparency. I intend to have the digitized, um, accounts payable invoices as well be digitized, and we're doing that right now with the high school uh students. Um, but having those all available in um Laserfish, Lori has, like, Lori has Laserfish set up as our record retention story. And so to be able to give access to all the directors so that they're able to look up their older invoices and that, especially me. There are times when I see something, say, is this what we've always been doing? Unable to look that up. It is such a time saver. And then when, at the end of the year, the auditors, um, they will um randomly select, they'll give us a random list of invoices that they want pulled. And somebody would go to those paper files, pull them out, and then scan them and then put them back into this process. This needs to be a drag and drop. I would literally give a thumb drive, and I worked with each arm and reach out. Um, literally give the auditor a thumb drive and say, you can look up any invoice you want. You don't need to tell me, randomly select it, look away. Uh, because once they start looking, generally have another question, they ask you for orders. So if they have the whole thing, actually moves the whole process along faster, and actually you have a little time saving for that. And you look professional. They see it, they go, they're tending to save us a little time and energy, and they, they appreciate that. Um, and then the unemployment taxes. Currently, uh, Antioch is paying, is as a municipality, you have two choices. Not like a business. Businesses are ratepayer. They, they have a rate, and they have to pay that rate on, on the specific dollar amounts um, towards the unemployment taxes. Municipalities are unique, that they can either pay um by rate, and currently the cost is around twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars a year. Um, just about a few years ago, it was more in the range of fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars, um, when you pay by rate. But when you have, you have the opportunity that you can pay dollar-for-dollar benefits instead of right rate, which means if we, if we had somebody that we let go, or they left, and they were entitled to uh unemployment benefits, whatever they're paid, we would have to pay dollar-for-dollar. And I can tell you, over my forty years, never have I been in a situation where the dollar-for-dollars we paid out, but it, you know, was less than um or exceeded the uh rate amount. Um, it just doesn't happen. The people that work for us, that they're, they're part of the breadwinners of the family. They cannot go without a job. They're, they make you two, three weeks out. They're going to get another job. It's not like they're sitting on unemployment for, you know, months at a time, or something. That's not what's going to happen. And so I know that we'll have the savings. Amongst, with all the different savings that I mentioned, I mean, at this time, that comes out to around ninety-seven, ninety-eight thousand dollars a year. So when you look over the five-year financial forecast period, you're pushing almost a half a million dollars in savings. That is all going to be able to be used towards capital projects and equipment. So I feel good about where we're at. I think we can do better, and we'll continue to work for the best financial interests of the village. Does that cover me? Any questions?
Just one. Questions?
There's one. The credit cards, you can't do this. Secretary Spade doesn't, they handed over to the person using the card. Can we assess that fee to them?
Correct. We'll be, we'll be having a resolution come soon, I think.
Yes, so I had to do a little more research with the credit card companies that we're currently using. And we have to watch the use of uh the parks, um, the credit card processing report. Um, I've read that information is able to go directly into your software. So we don't want to affect anything to do with the parks, but on the BSNA side um, that we're migrating to, um, they have relationships with their party, um, credit card processors. And so we're going to be researching that and anticipate better service. I think I hear about service.
And for, I think, um, and I may be wrong on this, but I think when I looked at the whole budget from every department, that number's approaching more of like a six-figure number through the whole village, so I think between maybe permits. I might be wrong, but it's definitely higher than forty-five because you get the parks and all the other fees that we're, we're paying essentially.
So it wasn't a specific line item, so I gave you, I, um, I forget which, one of the trustees asked that I share all my allocations, which is where I group like line items. But Antioch doesn't have a line item that says specifically like credit card processing fee. It's like buried within a professional services number, and so I had to go in, try to pull each of those. And I think I did a search by uh bank fees, maybe, and uh went through and pulled the numbers, and so twenty-eight, well, it was
Forty-five.
Forty-five thousand is the number that I pulled out. We'll go with the mayor's.
It's a lot. It's a lot. It's a, it's a public works employee. Alright, um. Ars.
Thank you. Good evening. Michael, I think I can pass that deal on in a civic record like one.
Nice. What?
I promise I won't. I don't promise, I'll try. Um, okay, thank you. I'm going to give you all a high-level sort of overview of the Parks and Recreation, oh, it's working now? Um, of our department budget. Um, so we'll start with overall revenue. Um, as you can see, um, over forty percent of the revenue for the department comes from day camp registration. So forty-one percent um makes up all of the day camp registration for um the prerequisite, the fifty-dollar registration fee, the um pizza day money, the cookout money, the uh, you know, weekly registration, the pool pass money, all of those kinds of things. Um, that is followed by the um Aqua Center, so daily admissions, pool passes, swim lessons, things like that. Um, and then our top third is, where are we? Sixteen percent. Wait, did I write that? Yeah, sixteen percent for the community development special events. So um, that's uh primarily the wine walk, um, donations and sponsorships for um our large events and things like that. Down button. Yes. Um, overall expenses. Um, our largest expense um comes from the administrative uh area. Um, that's primarily um full-time salaries, benefits, things of that nature. Um, that is followed by Aqua Center expenses at twenty-three percent and day camp expenses at twenty-two. The administrative budget, um, I'm projecting a seven percent increase in revenue, all of forty-five hundred dollars. Um, and that is just due to pavilion and park rentals um throughout the year. Um, expenses is, there is a planned increase um anticipated um for maintenance costs to Tim, Tim Osmond's sports complex um and salary and benefits for a program supervisor and a special event supervisor that had previously been parsed out into other uh other budget areas. For the Aqua Center, um, fifty-seven percent of the revenue comes from fees, um, which is, you know, daily fees or the uh season passes. Um, we do get nineteen percent of our revenue from concessions. Um, I will be uh doing a concession um evaluation this year to see what we're selling the most of and um, what we're buying things for versus what we're selling them for to make sure that that is coming out um as profitable as it can be without being unfair. Um, fifteen percent of our revenue comes from lessons, and we do get an eight percent um of our revenue from private rentals, semi-private rentals, and use of the pool by the Antioch Waves swim team. Um, the biggest expense is uh wages and um any benefits. There are no benefits necessarily. Um, I guess there's some benefits, but there's no um health insure, yeah, health insurance, like things like that benefits. Um, where we previously had a full-time aquatic supervisor who was also doing um some programs. Um, and, you know, the preschool program and things like that. That restr, I restructured that so that our aquatics person is seasonal, um, so that they're working at um sort of March or April through the end of the aquatic season and closing that out. That is proving to be successful. We did have the pool open this past weekend. Um, so there is an overall decrease in salaries and wages due to that restructure. Uh, but we are um anticipating a ten thousand dollar increase in materials and supplies um and a nineteen thousand dollar spend in contractual services for um the refinishing of the slide, which needs it. Um, the splash pad area, slide, landing pad needs to be replaced, you know, some things like that. Um, on average, just for your knowledge, municipal pools only recover thirty to sixty percent of their expenses. Um, it is a giant hole in the ground that you pour money into, similar to a boat if you have one of those. Um, and so we're right on track. Okay, general programming. Um, general programming are the classes that uh we offer, our contractual sports classes. Um, things that we do in the department, either with in-house staff or contractual staff. Um, and we are anticipating a fifty-one percent increase for this fiscal year. Um, and a increase in expenses um as well. Um, however, I'm working to close that gap, um, where it was, uh, let me see, it was primary, it was a lot of it was very upside down, excuse me, previously, and so the margin now is a negative thirty-four percent. I think that's conservative. Um, I think that once we get programs rolled out for the uh fall and winter, um, we will see an increase in registration um and increase our, our profit margin, hopefully get closer to that zero. Um, but slowly, each year, um, I want to close that margin, um, close that gap, um, and offer more, more programs um with in-house instructors. Um, our contractual agreements, you know, the, pretty much the best you're ever going to do is a seventy-thirty split. That's an industry standard. Um, so with an in-house program where you have an employee who is working part-time and teaching a program, and you're taking the registration and all that is already within your department, um, profit margins can be anywhere from fifty percent up. Um, so by having more in-house staff, um, we can close that gap further. Summer day camp. Summer day camps are a big winner. Um, we are uh planning for an eight percent increase in revenue. Um, and there is um continued growth in expenses. Um, however, twenty twenty-five is the final year of the minimum wage increase. Uh, we've seen that affect obviously our operation of the pool. Um, definitely operations at day camp, um, where most of our staff are making close or coming in at that minimum wage. Um, we are also increasing, or I'm sorry, we are anticipating an increased um expenditures for field trip admissions. Um, the eggs are ten dollars a dozen, so it costs more to get into um, you know, the, the bowling alley if we go there, or, you know, any of the field trip locations that were or, you know, any of the field trip locations that we're, that we're attending. And due to the increased capacity for our camp programs, increase in the number of kids we can accommodate per day, we are anticipating almost double field trip transportation costs because you can only fit so many kids on a bus. However, the goal is to accept the number of kids, considering the staff, that we can fit on the number of buses we are planning for, take a waitlist and then accommodate the waitlist as it becomes smart for us to do so. So not just blindly adding, but being strategic about how we add those kids into our field trips. We'll also be, I'll be evaluating this summer as we go, the areas that we can reduce our expenses and areas that we can increase revenue by process improvement, efficiency, things like that, not doubling the work, using our time better as staff in the office and making sure that our employees have all the tools they need to be successful so they can act quickly and confidently, which will save all of us time in the long run. As far as special events go, we've got two different special event areas. These are what we've kind of been calling departmental special events, so things like the Princess Dance, Mother-son Bowling, Easter, Mother-Daughter Bingo, things like that. These are typically events that I've, I'm putting, the events that I'm putting into this category are ones that require pre-registration and are fee-based. So you sign up, you attend, you're on a list, you pay, you know, you've got money, money, money to pay, so you have some skin in the game. We're actually making a thirty-five percent margin on these events, which is pretty good when I look at the other areas and pleasantly surprised with that. I want, I want to make it closer to fifty because these are not things that, in my philosophy, that are entitled to everyone. They are special, right? So it's not, you know, open space at the pool or, excuse me, at a park or taking advantage of beautiful outdoor spaces that are open to everyone. These are meant to be special events, and so you can have a higher premium on them. So sponsorship and donations are also part of our revenue here for folks like Heartland Bank who want to support the, the Mother-Daughter Bingo event. You know, things like that when they sponsor those individual events. We also pay a lot of contract payments for entertainers or renting attend or printing materials for folks to use throughout the, the event. Some improvements, I want to add monthly fee-based special events for the months that we don't have them so that we have at least one fee-based special event a month. I want to secure a pretty hefty sponsorship throughout the next year to try to offset the expenses that we're seeing for this. And I want to increase Fourth of July donations either through community support or a separate type fundraiser. See how that goes. Is that, just keep that cost just be growing? Let me see. Our community development special events, these are events that are for the community as a whole. They are either free or they have direct ties to our downtown businesses, things such as the Wine Walk or the Concert Series, the Food Truck Feast, the Farmer's Market, things like that. We are planning a fifty-one thousand dollar increase in revenue. However, this is primarily due to the correct classification of registration revenue. And there was, revenue was kind of coded in a bunch of different places in the previous year, so now we've got a cheat sheet that's all on track. For reference, Wine Walks bring in around twenty thousand, twenty-three thousand each. However, the expenses for the Wine Walks equal almost as much as that. So I want to do that, a fee evaluation on that to make sure we are covering all of our expenses and still coming out even just a little bit ahead. We are, we are up to, I think, seven or eight Farmer's Market vendors for this year. So they pay seventy-five dollars to participate in the entire season or ten dollars for a drop-in option. If they're like, oh, I want to commit to the whole thing, you know, they can pay ten dollars. So I'm anticipating some really strong growth due to the new location in the park. It's absolutely gorgeous. It's ideal. Like, that's where people want to be. We've got several food trucks already registered for the Food Truck Feastables. There's three dates in June, July, and August, and the food trucks come, they pay thirty dollars a day. And there is pretty strong participation so far for all three of those dates. And then I'm planning improvements to the Shamrock Jam and Five K for next year. We had about a hundred runners this past March. I'd like to increase that to a hundred and fifty or two hundred with some minor adjustments. I think that will attract a heavier crowd. So overall, what I want to do is create concrete sponsorship packages. We have so many businesses who want to support and be a part of all of the great things that are happening. But we don't have, yeah, here's everything that you can do, you know? So creating those sponsorship packages that give small businesses, large businesses, corporate businesses, you know, some options as far as you can be our, our X Y Z sponsor for this event or for this series of events or for this season, you know, things like that. And also the opportunity to work with them individually to create a package that works the best for them, their marketing needs, and it's gonna be most beneficial to them. I want to evaluate, like I said, the Wine Walk fee, increase Farmer's Market participation and improve the Shamrock Shuffle. And then the department summary. Overall revenue projected for this fiscal year is nine hundred and seven thousand with overall expenses at one point three for a margin of forty percent. This is better than three months ago when I started, so by, I think about ten percent. So I want to continue to improve that margin annually by ten percent. That's an aggressive goal. Ten percent doesn't sound like very much, but when you consider the rising costs of materials and supplies and all of those kinds of things, it's going to take some, some hard work and dedication by all of the folks in the department to make sure that that is happening. Does anyone have any questions about Parks and Recreation? Yay.
Thank you.
I've done my job. No questions. Thank you.
Next is community development, I believe, to my back. Howard?
Yes. So before I go into my presentation that I created here, everyone received a copy of the budget for tonight. So you'll notice that under community development, there is community development, planning and zoning, community development, building, community development, economic development, and community development, special events, committee, unity. As we move forward, now it's just gonna be two out of four because economic development has moved towards the administration and special events. As Parks and Recreation just discussed, has taken a lion's share of that. So for me, the focus is on your community development for planning and zoning and also for building. Pretty much, planning and zoning budget has gone down since my predecessor's been here for nine years and he was making plus or minus like seventeen thousand dollars more to me. That, that amount has dropped with my salary, so I just want to make that, you know, make that known. I'm also about, you know, trying to reduce costs and do more with less money. So I also canceled a lot of subscriptions and certifications that my predecessor was doing. I didn't find that useful for us to move forward. I'd rather use the money for other things. So as we move forward, I'm gonna go into my presentation.
That's one of the names.
All right, so let's start with community development. In this department, there's four people with me included. There's the community development director, which is me. We have a G I S coordinator who I supervise, but it falls under the administration's budget. There's the building inspector, and there's also the permits coordinator. So for the twenty-twenty-six budget, there will be four people under this department. Now, a little bit about community development. Community development includes planning, zoning, building, code enforcement, business development. This is an opportunity to introduce myself and the responsibilities and duties that are performed under community development. So under community development, I would be preparing long-term plans for the village and guide development through the planning and zoning and document development process. I'm also responsible for enforcing the village building regulations to maintain public safety and general welfare of the community, process all new entitlement cases, including annexations, annexation agreements, rezoning, variances, special uses, preliminary and final plans, and site plan reviews. Also, I assist the police department on code enforcement when it comes to property maintenance and quality of life issues. I'm not sure if anyone has noticed, but there's a reduction of feather flags. That's on me, you know, enforcing the sign code, signage collusion, and also looking at, at other items like inoperable vehicle codes and grass cutting and stuff like that. I also work on long-term beautification plans with the village, working on trying to improve the village corridors, you know, Main Street, One Seventy-Three, and others. And also implement long-term revitalization for downtown Antioch, including overseeing the facade program and preservation initiatives. Please keep in mind, I also provide liaison services to the Planning and Zoning Board and also to the Historic Preservation Commission, and also attending the village board for the COW meetings and regular meetings. So I'm pretty much involved in historic preservation and planning and zoning. So just a quick screenshot, five hundred and seventy-six billion permits were processed last year. Naturally, the higher amounts are always in the spring and summertime. So that shows you a little bit of where, where we were last year. Probably this year and next year, we're gonna probably grow because we have phase three of Clublands coming in and phase four eventually. We're already in discussion of how it's coming in, what plan years they're following for building codes and stuff like that. So naturally, the revenues will increase over time. But last year was a year where there wasn't much development occurring, especially for residential. So fiscal year twenty-twenty-six goals and objectives. The first one is the most crucial, is to update the I C C twenty-twelve Building Codes additions to the twenty-twenty-four Building Codes addition as required by the state of Illinois. Most likely in June, I would be presenting the Fed ordinance in front of you for the COW meeting and for the regular reading. The state requires that this is done on July, so we're already in contact with the state. I had to revise the, the person who's responsible for this, because my predecessor was still listed. So I'm working on that. What else? As part of the I C C code changes, I also have to amend the adoptions of the code nine dash one dash one and also nine dash one dash two, the amendments to the adopted codes. Naturally, we're gonna adopt the building codes, but there's gonna be permutations or changes that have to be reevaluated and reamended, so that's part of the process that I'm working on. Also, another big item, business license program for the village, revising the general license ordinance to create a new, more robust business licensing ordinance, creating a new business license application and creating a new business license handout. All these materials are now under legal review as we move forward in time. Also, revising the facade grant program ordinance and updated review process and monetary amounts. And also to restart the rental inspection process and encourage more apartment units to be inspected in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. And to continue working on the proposed lighting ordinance with further ordinance tweaks, which will be necessary. Also, updating and streamlining the building permitting process. We have a new permits clerk. Between her and I, we are working together and creating, doing more with the less, using technology to benefit us, trying to cut down on redundancy and try to save money as we move forward. Also, another thing that I do is to promote the Historic Preservation Mission, also trying to push more for its online presence on the village website. We have a very dedicated group here, and I feel like we need to follow Historic Preservation more. So we're, we're in the process of finalizing all the forms and documents that are typically filled out when a person applies for, for a home that's either gonna be landmarked or maybe for a district to be landmarked as a district. So most of those documents and plans and studies, they have all been done. So they're now gonna be listed on the website as the website changes and we move forward in time. Also, I'm working on the St. Peter's redevelopment project to revitalize and adapt the former school and convent building into new market-rate active adult rental units. Was able to convince the proposed property owner to reduce the density amount from a hundred and forty units to seventy. He's working on a concept plan that he's gonna come forward to us in the future. So that's one of the things I looked at was reducing the density while reusing the existing building structure, which the current property owner wants to do. He wants to save those buildings. Also, assisting Parker Hanneton to develop a new office building, outdoor proving ground at the Antioch Corporate Center. They reached out to me about this proposition, so eventually they're gonna generate a concept plan and we're gonna come together and go forward with it. Also, supporting legal, the legal side, with the proposed annexation of West Beach Grove Road to Antioch. And also working with the Order of the Antioch Plaza on either a building retrofit or the redevelopment of the subject site, while also enforcing COVID property enforcement items, i.e. paving the parking lot, restriping, painting the building, working on the type of retention wall, the foundation building, and stuff like that. Also, assisting and populating new information for B S and A computer system and also assisting in populating new information for the village website. So I'm gonna be more involved with the village website as we move forward. I believe the village website is very powerful too. People should be aware of what planning and zoning is, what it entails about, but also building department or building review, safety, code enforcement, and economic development, assisting Ken Beederman, who lays on. So some of the big-ticket items, there are three that I'd like to mention and discuss. The first one is the seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars or less. You'll see or less for all three of them. For each hour, Green's assistants with me and helping me adopt Antioch's code update and significant changes. We're going from a twenty-twelve code to a twenty-twenty-four, multiple, I go, books, multiple edition, multiple fields like mechanical, engineering, high-color lighting, H-bag, building, and what have you. Why I say seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars or less is because I don't think we're gonna hit that target. We're not gonna spend that amount. We already paid for an invoice for six thousand dollars. The extra amount is if they have to do presentations in front of the board or they're assisting me further on promoting the new codes and also reaching out to the building community. I'm gonna do most of the heavy work here, so I don't think this amount will be spent. I think half of it will be spent, but I had to put it in the budget for a safeguard in case that number gets hit. The second one is one thousand six hundred or less for the purchase of the complete volume of the I C C twenty-twenty-four Building Code books. This volume includes the International Building Code, I V C twenty-twenty-four, International Residential Code, one and two family dwelling units, I R C twenty-twenty-four, International Fire Code, I F C twenty-twenty-four, International Fuel Gas Code, I F D C twenty-twenty-four, International Mechanical Code, I M C twenty-twenty-four, International Property Maintenance Code, I M P C twenty-twenty-four. International Property Maintenance Code, I M P C twenty twenty-four. And the International Swimming Pool and Pool Hall Code, I S P S C twenty twenty-four. Purchase of buying these books as a, as a. Volume set or something like that will be around a thousand five hundred, but I just rounded it up to eight thousand six hundred. And finally, another, the last ta- big ticket item is eight hundred dollars or less if it depends if people in my department contribute. Or wanna spend the money. But my idea is to purchase clothing with the Antioch logo for each of the four employees. So each person will receive a two hundred dollar amount to spend on either a jacket. Uh, a vest with, with the Antioch logo, a polo shirt and what have you. Uh, I find that, you know, being in the public sector, going out to the public. Uh, we need to, you know, promote Antioch in a positive manner, but we also need to demonstrate who we are in the public, so. These are the big three ticket items. All the other stuff in the budget under planning and zoning, under building, it's either salaries or salaries that deals with social security and. I M R F and all of that. Uh, and the mundane stuff, printing, gasoline expenses, purchasing, uh, office, uh, items and stuff like that. So no substantial changes there. So these are the big three ticket items that I'm proposing for this building budget. Now, what you'll notice is one thing, and I also noticed two. So remember what I explained at the beginning, planning, zoning, building, special events and economic development? I'm taking over the facade program, so the facade program, the one hundred thousand dollar is considered an expense. So under the building department section, it's a hundred thousand dollars worth of an expense. It was under economic development since I'll be reviewing the facade applications and taking it to the board. And reviewing under building permit processing, it was natural for that amount of money to go towards the budget. Building department, so that's the only substantial change that you'll see that will pop up the budget a little bit under the building department. Just because of the grant program. Now, that's a program that either could be spent in its entirety or it could be, uh, not spent at all. It depends on who's applying and how to reply. As part of my discussion here, I want to revise the facade grant program to allow for, uh, grants for twenty-five or fifty thousand. So there might be four for twenty-five thousand, for a hundred thousand for applicants, or it might be two at fifty. But first I have to revise the facade grant ordinance. My top priority right now, especially for the month of June, July, are the ICC twenty twenty-four code. And also the business license to get that up and running. Then I can work on the facade, also work on the rental inspection process that we started. Uh, work, work at it with the new permits clerk at full speed. That means reaching out to the apartment complexes, advising them, explaining to them that when a tenant moves out and a new tenant moves in and you have to call us. To make sure that these apartments are clean, safe and healthy to live in. And eventually we'll move on to rental homes. If someone's renting a home, they should be calling us for the inspection just to make sure everything's compliant, the reh, is safety. So in a nutshell, that's my budget. It was the three items that I think are the most expensive. The facade just falls into community development building section because of me reviewing it. Bringing it to the board and stuff like that, so if anyone has any questions, I'm here to answer them. Anyone?
Any questions? Thank you for all your hard work on that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe the police are next.
So just first, I just wanted to highlight, um, you know, Jim, Jim and Brandon during this report, I talked about some of the expenses associated with some of the missions. Um, a budget that hasn't really been highlighted before the board previously is the police fire commission budget. Uh, that's a fifteen thousand dollar number, so I just wanted to demonstrate, uh, the driving forces behind some of those costs. Uh, you know, they're normally scheduled for a quarter, four quarterly meetings per year, but because of the hiring of multiple processes that are guided statutorily. And them having the prevailing oversight of those processes. We have a lot more meetings, uh, when we go into recruiting testing, we're meeting every other week, um, over the course of about, uh, two, three months. So there's, there's a lot of meetings associated with that. We also incur additional costs within the commission practices itself, as some of the other, um, commission supports do not. You see some costs in there for, um, new hired physicals, new hired recruit, recruitment testing. Our promotional one is gonna expire next year, so we're gonna have to generate another cultural list, which generates some costs. Um, the commission has requested some professional level of training, so they understand the, uh, breadth and depth of. Level of responsibility that they have provided by statuteary requirements. Just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of what, uh, what comprises the total budget for the police fire commission as a whole. This is just a brief snapshot, um, the, the police department budget is by far the, the largest budget within the village. Um, that's not uncommon to, uh, the municipal operations. So we have, we have a total request this year of a little over eight point four million dollars to operate the department. Uh, you'll see that roughly, roughly seven point two million of that accounts for personnel costs. Uh, that's national average for, uh, personnel costs within a police department to operators between eighty and ninety percent. So we're right smack dab in the middle of that, which is a, a pretty good place for us to be, um, that, that boosts the cost to employ. The general employment for our thirty-nine employees, which consists of thirty-six full-time and three part-time staff. Uh, there is a number in there this year for Secoit Creek, uh, security costs, but, uh. Uh, continuous topic of discussion on security in the board, we've implemented a practice utilizing. Our C S Os and departmental officers on extra hours, um, to provide that service, um, and preparing houses for the communities. Uh, such as Fox Lake if accounted for security costs in Netherland Parks, this is the highly cost-effective way to do so. That's costing us roughly a third for Fox Lake is currently spending on security costs. Uh, just a brief, brief snip there, a lake camp cost is, uh, almost three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in year one. Um, a little tick up from our current kind of cost, but not significant. Training costs about forty-two thousand, uh, overtime increases, three hundred and fifty thousand. Now, I know that sounds like a rather large number, but just keep in mind that historically over the last, um, five years, the police department has averaged anywhere between. A twenty-five and sixteen percent staffing shortage, um, you know, currently we're operating. Uh, operationally, uh, short, four people, um, there's two in the academy, two in field training. They're not officers, they're able to serve individually, so they don't qualify for boots on the ground. So we do have shift shortages due to vacations or sick falls or training needs. Those have to be, um, replaced by higher backs. A lot of driving forces between that overtime increase that we see. Um, as discussed previously, it's some staffing analysis that I've brought to the board. Uh, you know, I were at thirty-two officers, um, total authorized count. That's, that's one of, one full-time position above where we at two thousand and seven, so we haven't grown our staffing. But the public safety needs, we obviously increased exponentially over the years. Just wanted to highlight, you know, last, last, last budget cycle, the board was gracious enough to fund the, uh, flock L P R system for us. Um, I received some questions from trustees, um, about how that technology is being implemented and if we're finding it to be effective. Uh, we're currently in year two of a five-year agreement with Block, uh, the total annual cost to operate the five cameras that we have strategically placed out in the community is twelve thousand five hundred. Um, cameras, but when you think about the system itself, you have to keep in mind that. By having these cameras, we also get access to nearly a thousand other partner organizations, um, of the region. So just think about the power, the power of, uh, multiplying those numbers, we have access to a tremendous amount of data. I had, uh, D C Smith cross some reports on me and try to understand how often our, our staff is utilizing these cameras. And over, over the last twelve months, uh, the system, system's been accessed by officers in the course of. For official duties investigations, roughly eight hundred times, um, so it's getting a tremendous amount of use. Uh, it's helped us solve several cases, uh, including retail thefts, burglaries, um, hit and run cases. There's actually a case just yesterday where, uh, we had a hit and run. Where we were able to identify the driver of the car based off that lock system, um, stalking, tracking stolen vehicles. And it's been used to assist in shootings and now other communities and also help solve some missing first cases. So, um, in addition to helping our law enforcement efforts here, it's, it's helping tremendously for law enforcement efforts in greater Lake County. Uh, you know, I talk to chiefs all the time and we continue to see more and more of these communities come online, um, with this, with this technology. And it truly is one of the, the most transformational technologies that I've seen rolled out to law enforcement in my career. Again, there's a lot of privacy safeguards in place, um, you know, there's procedures that officers have to follow or they assist the system. Uh, it's not, not able to be used to track the services, jobs, the time they're going, that sort of thing. But you really can't come into the community or leave the community without the system recording some level of data being your license plate. So there's, uh, been an, an awesome tool for us. There's, you know, listen to the budget, there's a, a, a one-year large uptick in our night this costs of increasing about twenty-five thousand dollars. That is being due to the fact that, um, the current per, uh, member of our department that's assigned has been in there for nine years. Think of nine years assigned to SWAT details, that's quite taxing on an individual or family. Um, he is asked to, uh, be replaced, so that transition will take place during this fiscal year. And that's to account for all the equipment that has to issue to such a highly specialized, uh, position. And you just can't take one, uh, one ballistic armor, one piece of, uh, full body armor and transition to the other guy, it's all fitted, so. All those things come at a cost. Um, I know, uh, when we join these organizations, there's always costs, um, that come, come from the board and the community of whether or not. Um, the costs associated there with, are worth it. I just wanted to show, uh, the level of use that we've seen in night this since two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, so we did a little digging and in the previous ten years prior to two thousand and twenty-two, we had a total of two activations of night this. So if you could see the tremendous uptick that we've seen over the, over the last, uh, what, three years roughly, um, they've gone up exponentially. Again, it's just due to the changing, um, climate that we're seeing, from every community is seeing increasing demands for night this. So for every dollar that goes in night this, Antioch is certainly getting their fair share and it's. A, a resource that we could never, never provide internally with our own, um, with equipment we could never source by ourselves and, and. Uh, technical expertise that we'd never be able to provide, so it's, it's a well, uh, well, well-leaded investment within Antioch. Putting with the budget, um, thanks to the gracious, uh, support of the board in the last couple of years to maintaining our fleet and taking advantages of difficult. Find vehicles, um, we had to reevaluate our fleet needs. Uh, fortunately this year, uh, we're on a position, only have to ask for one SWAT car, so we've seen those costs. Uh, be high over the last couple of years, but we're seeking one replacement vehicle this year, uh, as Director Pearson mentioned, twenty-five thousand. But that is gonna be offset by the D U I replacement fund, uh, like everything else, costs to replace cars are going up. A new squad cars, new fully equipped coming in right around seventy-seven thousand dollars, um, the average lifespan for a bar patrol car. Uh, between five and six years, uh, before we start to see them, uh, max out on mileage at high maintenance costs, it's become overall unreliable. Uh, we have, uh, tried to do our best to, um, minimize the impacts of the budget over the years, how we're using our cars. You know, whereas all the detectives would drive previously, um, new cars that we would purchase on our different varieties. We've transitioned because they requested to have more police-like vehicles to, uh, pulling some vehicles out of service a little sooner. Going those into, uh, the detective fleets or using them within the C S O police. We're not buying cars for every division within the department as needed. We're trying to recycle them and diversify them throughout, um, we've also been able to provide a couple of vehicles throughout the village, um, the parks department. Currently has one for their use that was, uh, brought from our fleet to theirs and then, uh. The village pool as a whole, or village hall for I I T staff, or especially staff that need to be brought, it's gonna get one of our certain cars, it's not gonna be serviced this year too. One of the largest requests this year for us is gonna be, um, the transition of our existing body-worn camera squad camera, uh, which is reaching its end of life. Uh, I can't believe it's already been five years since we made that purchase, that investment. Uh, we're moving from, uh, a Panasonic system, which is Amy Bulltest, who has proven very challenging and. You know, she's, uh, I think we all have a couple of great years as a result, but the technology changes, you learn lessons. That was our first venture into this whole, um, body-worn camera. And as I watched the trends take place, not only within Lake County, but really nationally, um, Axon had, has like eighty percent of the market. We're coming to realize that there's a reason behind that. Um, their support and technology is superior to all, um. They're starting to leverage A I technology and to reduce staff time for redactions and videos, processing, so we're gonna see some savings within that. But most importantly to point out is we really don't have a choice in this battery market. Part of the safety act we're in this is the Body-Worn Camera Act, um, so as of January of the twenty twenty-five. It's mandatory that all police departments have body-worn cameras and SWAT cameras, uh, so this is just us keeping compliant with the legislation, um. And it's, it's gonna be a reoccurring cost, the life, the life cycle of these projects is roughly five years. Or, um, the technology is considered obsolete and the support is eliminated, um. So if you, every five years, we're gonna see this cost reoccur, uh, you know, we're gonna evaluate this moving forward, there's different options out there. Um, on how we structure the payments, uh, there's options to kind of, uh, stretch those payments out over five years. Really, the reason we're going to the method we were is, uh, we have, uh, offset hundred and five thousand of that through the drug seizure accounts, as Michael had mentioned. Uh, there is a current capital fund, our replacement fund of a hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. But we also have a grant application pending with the state of, with the state law enforcement training standards for, for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So in the event we're awarded that, we have to have the full budget amount to be able to pay. You're not able to, um, stretch those payments out over five years, if you're worth a grant, you gotta pay it all at once. So there's a potential for a great significant cost savings for the village if we, if we get that grant and we're, we're cautiously optimistic we'll see success with that. Um, not really relevant to the current discussion, but you know, I'd be able to tell you it's kinda, um, sound like an early warning alarm for the board and. Start having them think about the things. You know, we, we're talking about all these capital, uh, projects that we have and new village halls, new, uh, public works, which is certainly much needed, but. You know, even the police department now is twenty-five years old and, you know, fortunately, it's one of those old things that. I don't think you, anyone really is able to envision the growth that Antioch would experience. When PD opened, Antioch was probably sixty-five hundred people, where we stand today at almost fifty-eight thousand. Um, and, and the organization's had to expand, uh, to accommodate it. So just some things that we have to keep in mind and find ways to address, not saying, you know, to come back to the board and ask for a brand-new police department, certainly. Finding ways, uh, to find monies to, to kind of re, reimagine some of the existing spaces that we have. Oh, we're currently facing space constraints, um, you know, that the men's locker room has been at near capacity for a number of years, but, um. Really had great success with, uh, the hiring of, of, of women police officers with the organization, we're well above national trends right now. At the time PD was built, uh, women in policing wasn't quite as dominant as it was then, so. The locker room is much smaller, uh, in their overcapacity in there, so we're gonna have to come up with some creative means to make sure that they have. The space and the facilities that they very much deserve. Um, pretty much every available storage closet or storage room within the PD, that's inverted to office space over the last couple of years, so. We have members of the command staff that are working within what were, uh, storage closets at one point, so we're, we're kind of busting at the seams for office space. Um, our H back infrastructure, I know Dennis's staff becomes frustrated with that monstrosity every year. Um, it's outdated, it's twenty-five years old and at some point we're gonna have to look at replacing that, that's gonna come at a big cost. Our generator just failed completely this year. Uh, we do have that budgeted for replacement the upcoming, uh, fiscal year, so that, that'll be a. Something that we can't operate without when the power goes out, we still need, you know, like need lights and garage doors and all those kinds of things to come with it. Uh, there's some security concerns, lower cost items we'll be able to start addressing over the couple, next couple of years. Need to expand our access controls within the building, uh, particularly within our armory or admin stores, while they're secured and locked. Uh, best practice to say that they need to be on, uh, electronic, uh, access controlled and locked doors, so we know specifically who's coming in and out of those spaces at particular times. Uh, technology limitations. Amy walks in there, I think she about, she said every time she sees it, yeah, we have, we have power surge or something goes out, she's gotta figure which, which one of the. Hundred and three extension cords that's running the technology in there is responsible and unplugs things and moves things, so. There's some technology expansions that will happen. Then again, very importantly, um, addressing accessibility and functionality issues over the years, you know, A D A. Requirements have expanded and changed, um, while getting into our building itself, is A D A accessible, um. Getting within the work spaces within the building are not A D A compliant, so that's not why we're gonna have to. Recognize that trend and as we continue as a community to improve our A D A accessibility, we should certainly be looking to do so within our facilities. So unless the board has any findings, that will be my presentation for tonight. Questions?
I, I have one, uh, Jim. I've only looked at it fifty times. Did we start putting a vehicle replacement in this budget yet?
It's part of the equipment replacement fund, so Michael has kind of established. It's part of the equipment replacement fund, so Michael has kind of established or expanded that beyond just the vehicle fund. Um, while we started that last year to get a placeholder, didn't really have any um, revenue streams. Michael has created some of those revenue streams to come into the, into the replacement.
Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, Trissey Butler?
Um, just one on the flock camera system.
Yes, sir.
Now that we've had it in place, it's obviously being used and used the way that you, we we expected it. Do we have any blind spots? We need to add cameras or shoot cameras?
No, I thi- I think the the cameras that we have, uh, where we design their locations, I think, for to optimize. The ways that individuals come into and into our community. You know, there's, there's always going to be vulnerabilities, and I, you know, I could probably come before you and say, we can add cameras every year. Um, to make sure that we create a flock dome around Antioch if we wanted to. But I think from uh, just looking at our our crime patterns, what many, where many of these individuals are coming from or going to, I think we have more than adequate coverage at this time.
Alright, thank you, Chief, and then last but not least, like, two hours past your bedtime.
Well, I think you probably saved the quickest one for last. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to present uh, the public works kind of overview. Right here, basically, I'm just showing our org chart, uh, and the number of employees that we have within each sub department. Um, including full time and part time and a few vacancies. Uh, I do want to bring up, I would rather up to some of you that have been board members for a while. Uh, just showing the other departments that we work with um, and support, which also comes out of the public works budget. Um, if we're repairing buildings or maintenance to build properties or park properties, that's all, that all comes out of the public works uh, budget. Uh, this slide, I just want to show an overview of past years, each department and how we try to maintain a pretty steady. Total for each of those uh. Different categories as far as the uh, departments. Um, some of the increases that you do see within like the water and sewer. Was related to either the wastewater treatment plant and clarifier project or uh, well seven, when we put on the project to, where you have the well. Or well line, um, but for the most part, we've studied, uh, even with some of uh, the increases that we see with our salary. Some of the uh, operational uh, items that we perform, or at least kind of, I would say, like our mission. Lot of them are for every year. Uh, number one is responding to our, our residents, our citizens. With the complaints or issues that uh, they may have within uh, our public right of ways, our public properties. Um, we always uh, take every complaint or concern to the full extent respectfully. And try and provide the appropriate action, along with uh, the amenities like our parks, properties. Uh, our buildings, cleaning the buildings, making sure that all the village staff, not just our public works, has a clean environment and is uh, safe. Um, making our, our repairs timely, trying to uh, publish those within a timely manner. So that uh, it's not getting worse or um, appear to be neglected or we're not responding to it. Uh, some of the, the projects, which Michael had uh, touched on a few, have listed here, uh, the sewer infiltration. To our sanitary line, uh, we hope to continue that, the groundbreaking for a new public works facility. I hope to uh, bring uh, that project back to the board on June eleventh. Instruction documents at a hundred percent complete and then hopefully go off to bed. Within the week or two following that. Um, the road program, of course, we do every year, hopefully after this year, bringing the woods, looking back into. Our normal road program of a million dollars a year, which accomplishes roughly about three miles, maybe a little bit more depending on prices. Which will align us with the total amount of roadways that we have and what we should be. You know, completing as a road program. Uh, the Woods of the Antioch project, which we all were, uh, our sidewalk uh. Uh, program, which is lifting through a contractor and removal and replacement, which is in-house. The painting of a water tower at one centimeter and a melon, also known as the Raymond Water Tower.
How much that costs? How much that costs?
Uh, we have estimates, I think it's six hundred fifty thousand right now, um, but.
In a while.
It's, it's a very expensive uh, process. That's where the interior actually, there's some uh, items that need to be updated. Uh, skated improvements, which is communication, we still mostly water sewer and always water treatment plant, just updating our infrastructure. Uh, following our fleet, fleet schedule, uh, program, which might be based on the pieces of equipment that we were. Um, requested this year and then the lead service line elimination program, which. Trusty basic talked about infrastructure and although I like to try and be proactive and think of water mains and sewers. And then the I D P A gets us with the lead uh, elimination, which is estimated to be about two and a half million now program. Which is, is the right thing to do for the safety of the community, but uh, not, not expected to have to be at a, a short amount. That will complete.
Any questions for Dennis? I will tell you, Dennis is always very spot on and frugal with his, with his fiscally. Very fiscally responsible, and I told him I'll tell the board, if this marketplace thing takes off, like, getting his budget to like a three million dollar. Really nice, so we, we need that sales tax ready to give those guys a little more, more dough.
I do have a question.
Yeah, uh, Scott.
Um, the water tower painting, isn't it currently having uh, the Sequoia pride symbol on the tower? Are we going to preserve that or are we working with them to get the new one added back on there?
Uh, correct, there is a uh, Sequoia logo on the west side of the tower. Um, I have pulled the original agreement, it appears that the language within the agreement states that we would. Um, basically replace that logo as long as it didn't exceed the expense of what our logo would cost. So um, I have to look further into that and I'll uh, utilize some other kind of village staff or the attorney to make sure that I'm. Reading it correctly, um, but that would be incorporated in the painting.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, capital projects.
Yep, so we had this. So I'm going to run through the capital projects, but it's real quick by uh, department. Um, the, there's debt service uh, from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen for twenty eight one thousand, this is out of the finances. Special services, great two hundred dollar, biggest ticket item for finances, the computer software that you've already approved. Um, so migrating to B S A this year. The uh, parks, um, improvements is a million seventy nine thousand dollars. The Centennial Park Project, that hundred dollars, the Van Shell Group, eighteen thousand, Van Shell Speakers, eighty seven thousand. Williams Park Pavilion Electrical, ten thousand, Williams Park Security Cameras, forty three hundred, and Veterans Memorial, sixty thousand. Full improvement, um, thirty thousand for painting and twenty thousand for sand filter replacement. Police services, again, there's some existing debt uh, outstanding related to vehicles. And uh, the improvements for the generator that Chief mentioned, forty nine thousand, generator transfer switch. Um, thirty nine thousand seven seventy, so uh, two hundred and fifty thousand four fifty for the police services. Public Works, again, there's debt related to a couple of the vehicles that's still outstanding. Um, the streets, it's gonna be ninety five thousand, we mentioned that there's elements, um. It goes along with uh, the M F T dollars, um, so these aren't the total dollars being spent on street right of ways. Or the uh, Woods of Antioch, this is just a portion of the funds. The new village hall, um, we currently spent, I think it was two hundred and some thousand in FY twenty twenty five. So this is the balance uh, remaining of um, one point seven million dollars. Um, there's sixty thousand dollars for landscaping alternatives is, um, the alternatives being like sort of window treatments of things. Once we move in that, uh, those nickels, nickels and dimes are going to add up uh, overall, so we have money set aside for that. New Public Works Building, mentioned a few times, ten duh, ten million dollars and then the toll capital fund. Fourteen million, three hundred fifty four thousand, one hundred and, one hundred dollars. Nope, I have equipment replacement as well. So for vehicles, um, and equipment, uh, this is for the police, the one police vehicle. Chief mentioned, the portion of the body and vehicle cameras, uh, hundred si- sixty thousand. And then some vehicle uh, computers, fifty three hundred dollars, so two hundred forty one thousand, one seventy for the police. Public Works, um, there is a truck thirty seven, uh, dump truck, two hundred twenty thousand. Combination loader backhoe, a hundred forty thousand, and John Deere, uh, currently a twenty eight, as I say, twenty eighteen. Uh, being replaced, uh, twenty five thousand. Is it twenty five?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the van, two hundred, uh, two thousand sixteen, uh, for fifty thousand dollars. So total for Public Works, we're in thirty five thousand, total equipment replacement, six hundred and seventy six thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. You got it.
Questions? Everyone's brain is melted.
It is, it is, it is, it's on fire this year.
And there's no.
Let's just point out, you didn't pause.
I will thank you, everybody, for really a thorough job, all the department heads, all the new people. Everybody that's coming here has done a uh, an excellent job, especially coming in, getting this turned around in such a short period of time. So thank you, and thank you for the board for meeting with everybody and asking questions and sitting through this. So I'm going to take the liberty of taking a five minute break, but moving to veterans item next on the agenda. Um, so we're going to make number, item number eight, number five, so I'm going to make a pot of coffee and that falls in today. Yeah.
This is going to die.
Okay, we got charged up here. Alright, five minute break. This now is going to be number five. Which is discussion regarding the Veterans Memorial Project, layout and specifications, uh, that were, I think it's a PowerPoint of some of the renderings that were distributed. From Dennis, I believe.
Yes, I, I divided them to Lauren.
Yeah, I think, yeah, they were circulated.
Well, okay, got it. Okay. Alright, so uh, good morning. Um, tonight, uh, well, first of all, uh, thank you for the opportunity for us to uh, speak to you this evening. About the Veterans Memorial. At the March twelfth count, the board moved the site of the memorial. Concerns were raised about the overall size of the memorial. So we took a look at it, I communicated with Josh Bowler and Dennis Heidl. Asked them if they could come up with some new designs. They did, they divided us with six different drawings. Um, um, and then the A V M board narrowed it down to two. We have those tonight. First of all, this is the original. And if you look along where the. Pathway is. The concern was that the original was too close to the pathway. Does everyone, the pathway is on the right. Dennis, Dennis can help out. That's the pathway and that's the original, and that's the original fifty foot diameter footprint, okay? This is the pathway of concern. Where the arrow is, the far right arrow. Alright. Alright, this is our first redesign. Both of the uh, redesigns were done by Dennis. So if there are any technical questions, Dennis is here and he can um, help out. But this is our first redesign. The oval is thirty feet wide by fifty feet long. It sits about ten and a half feet away from the path. Whereas the original was about two feet from the path. We've moved this particular design about ten and a half feet away. The next design is a circle. It looks a lot like the original, except it's ten feet smaller. So this is forty feet in diameter, approximately five feet away from the path. Smaller than the original, but closer to the path than the oval. Um, the path that uh, is of concern. Is actually, maybe at one time, it was a, I've been told, it was a three feet wide path. Gravel. It is not currently a three feet wide path gravel. It's a little bit of trampled down foliage, but that's it. Um, we, our plan is to make that a, a path again. To go in there and create a three foot wide path. What material we use, I don't know, um, but we will make that a path again. Behind the uh, more memorial. Um, there are five trees down there, five pine trees that may or may not be affected. I know that this was a question the other day, um. I don't know yet, until the contractors get down there and work begins, we won't know how many trees have to be removed. It may be two, it may be all five. I do believe that two or three of them are dead anyways. But there will be some trees removed, I don't know at this time how many. We will be doing landscaping and trees will be planted on the site. So there will be trees, the same trees, of course, won't be put back because those are big, very old pine trees. But uh, landscaping will be done. So, um, if you have any questions.
And so what, how far in the, how far to the east did you move this from the original design?
I don't, I don't have that exact.
Was it like fifteen feet or so?
Oh, no, it was, it was quite a bit.
Cause it was pretty close to the original.
Yeah, it was more in this area.
Yes.
I thought I'd moved it at least, I would say, forty feet.
Forty feet.
And one of the concerns is the uh, telephone pole over there. There's a telephone pole on um, Orchard. Okay, we originally had thought that the telephone pole could be moved around the corner onto Skidmore. But that won't work, and so we had to move the memorial east of the telephone pole. The other thing I wanted to uh, point out. Okay, the arrow on the right is the path. The arrow in the middle is the stake of the high point of the forty feet diameter design. The arrow on the far left is the high point of the oval design.
Alright, so I'll open this up for questions. Um, I'll start on this side. You want to go, why don't we do it the normal way, you go around two times, okay, so I'll start down. Be basic, and I'll go around. Scott, don't let me forget you, get over here. Get over here, and then we'll go around twice, and then I say, I believe this is also up on the second agendas. This is the discussion time.
You ready for me?
Yeah, I'm ready.
So, my question is, this is gonna cost out of taxpayer money sixty grand, right?
Well, the sixty thousand, and someone from finance can maybe clarify me for me. When Zeta was here, that sixty thousand was a sixty thousand dollar rebate for veterans' tax payments. So when that came in, we said, well, let's use that. It was, it was a, is that accurate, Michael?
Yeah.
It was like a rebate of some sort that came in? That, so that, that's when that came, that that worked.
Because we're putting this whole project together, I don't even know what money's out there. As a voting member, it's probably, that's one of the reasons I voted, knew, because I don't know what's been raised. There's no finance statement given to the board. This is a blind vote. So then, my question would be, if there is money there, more than ten dollars, probably is, who owns it? Does the village own it after, after day two? So if it gets vandalized day two, then we gotta repay, the taxpayers are gonna have to repay for it? Cause there's no cameras there, there's no nothing there, it's like the tank sitting there. We, American Legion came out, redid the tank, now we've got fighting between the American Legion. And, and it's just, it's, it's been a pissing match. This whole thing has been a pissing match. American Legion says, we're not, we're not gonna do color here, come on. It's a bunch of babies and babies. You know, I'm supportive of us. And I had the guy that wrote the letter cut them off and defend that letter. It's just, this whole thing is just so weird to me. That this is just a blind vote, I got no money, nothing in hand, and, and I would probably vote no, because I don't know. If this is gonna exceed the sixty thousand dollars in extra money, it's gonna have to come out of some budget. Cause we just talked about, oh, we pay employees too much. Well, here's, here's money, if we gotta pay, we gotta cut someone's salary. It just doesn't make sense, a blind vote, not knowing how much money's sitting there. Who owns it? Why is, why are both people fighting, the VFW and the American Legion, with Antioch?
Let me answer the first two questions that I can answer. One is, yeah, we would own it and we own the property. The second item about the security, this just came up from Amy at a staff meeting, and I hadn't even thought about it. That the cameras from the park do cover this area, and I guess when that sign was vandalized, illegal sign or not. Was, they were able to catch the perpetrators because it was on the camera. Is that right, Amy? I mean, it's over to you, Mark. You're good?
Yeah.
Was that covered? Okay, so that makes me feel a little bit better about that portion of it. Obviously, if a carnival's blocking it, then changes things, but, uh, they won't go that way. The other question, I think Debbie will have to answer to the dollars, cause I don't have that.
Okay. I have, in the past, provided dollars, trustee.
I've never gotten any.
Okay, I, I have provided them.
I've never gotten it.
Okay, okay.
Did you give a talking point? Did you give me a piece of paper?
I provided the document.
There's, I got no paper.
Okay.
Zero paper.
Okay. However, currently, we have one hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Your five oh one three C says you could raise fifty, so you're doing a tax, you're doing a secondary tax form with that, right?
My accountant is doing whatever needs to be done.
Okay, but there's this, my point is, your five oh one three says you can do fifty thousand dollars. So we don't have any of those accounting forms. That's my point. There's no transparency.
Oh, well, yeah, but then I don't know about how that relates to this discussion specifically.
The discussion is you're, you want to put this here, you want taxpayers to pay it. We don't have any, any money. And this is such a blind vote, we don't know how much money's actually there, cause we were given zero tax forms, that this money's sitting there.
Debbie, can you provide, obviously, tonight's, it's up for a couple items. Could you provide like a bank statement or balance sheet and a list of donors? I think like, I don't know, has Raymond Chevrolet give you their check yet?
They gave me the first half.
Okay, so, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever real commitment you have, I think Lions Club, us and whoever, Raymond's on your list and wherever else.
Chris Shepard was here tonight. For the Lions, but he, he had other things that he had to, so.
I know.
So he, he had to leave. He was here tonight to speak.
So, you, you, can you provide that at least for us and talk to your accountant how that works? Thank you. I'll come back around, Brad?
This project has, has been discussed for three years since, well, twenty. Well, I know, longer than that, but since I've been on the board, it was brought up about year one after I was on the board. It's been discussed nonstop since. I think. Thought a lot about what I wanna say and how I wanna say it about this, this memorial, and I think I just have to give a little history of. Where I'm at on it and why I, I. Am, am in favor of this as, as it is. This project, when, when brought to us as a board, caused some fire, firestorm a bit. But it became a big personality issue, going back two years on this now. A lot of misunderstandings, I think, from people about where people were at and why. All I know is that when it was broached about building a veterans memorial, I, I thought it was a great idea. I thought it was something that if we could raise the money, we should build. And, and there was a group of people that at the time were involved in this, including Doug and, and Paul Hedek and Jay Josweak. Our former trustee, Mary Domeniac. And they worked with you, Mayor, and our, and our administration at that time to locate a site that. At the time, everyone agreed was, was a decent site and, and, and made sense. I was asked at one point by trustee Domeniac to, to help raise funds for this organization and. I've gotten to know these people that are on this AVM and. These people have nothing but great intentions for this memorial. The meetings I've sat in, the effort these people are putting into this is, is heartfelt, it's, it's legit. They are raising the money, they are getting donations. Where we have Josh and his, the Great Lakes Construction, people that are willing to step up and, and help construct this now and, and. I have just been blown away by the efforts of the people on the AVM, not including myself. This is all on them. These, the, the other members of that committee are all veterans. And they have done nothing but put their hearts and souls into raising money to, to build this, this memorial. It seems like every time we take a couple steps forward, something happens, brings it back. There's always another question, everything else. Obviously, we need to raise the funds to build this. They've been doing a great job. Just what, the last meeting, I mean, there was just a movie that was shown at the Antioch Theater. That a couple members of the Veterans Memorial Committee were invited to go there and raise money, and what did you guys raise in one couple hours at the movie theater?
Five seventy-nine.
Right, almost six hundred dollars for a few hours at a movie theater, raising money. The people in town wanna support this. I've just went through an election process where I did not get one person say they were against it, other than those that we, that are, that we know of. I see the development of this village campus forming over here that I think would. You know, compare with anyone's village campus around this area of the state of Illinois and New Wisconsin. Between our beautiful Sequoia Creek Park, between our new village hall, between the band shell and our long-term plans for that. When money and funds are available to, to this memorial here, to the Brooks Wetland. Which we obviously need to put some money and time into to clean that up. I think this is a great site. We, as a board, a few months ago, agreed and, and, and agreed to put this at that site. And had some questions and wanted the AVM to work to see if we can shrink it down. Deal with some of the concerns of the Brooks family. And, and continue to raise the money, and they've done all of them. Now, I don't think there's gonna be a solution out there that the Brooks family's gonna be a hundred percent behind. There's probably not one that the AVM's gonna be a hundred percent behind. But overall, for the community of Antioch, I think this is the right time and place to build this memorial. That being said, I think if we take a step back, which we're known to do, all government offices do and bodies do at some point. And, and say, you know what, let's not do this right now, or let's hold off. I don't think this will ever get built. We don't know where we would put it, we don't know how much it would cost somewhere else, we don't know if the funds would be there or not. And, and I think we're putting a lot of things up in the air that necessarily aren't. But, you know, could it be built? Yes, but I just, I don't see it happening anytime soon. So, from my perspective as a board member, I see this as a perfect opportunity for us to. Get behind this project, put the fundraising over the top in this next few months over the summer. Get all the fundraising done, get this set to be built, and hopefully, and, and. Don't know if this has changed, but from what I've heard from Josh in the past is that there's a chance that this thing could be done by Veterans Day this, this fall. And if that's the case, I think we all win, because this is something that will benefit all of Antioch. Ainsley, to your family, I, I understand, and I, I honestly do. I, I've thought about this a lot. I have a, my family has a recreation center named after my grandfather in Shiller Park. I've thought about it and said, you know, if the village needed to tear that down or do something, would I be upset? Yeah, I think I would. If they did something to improve that and, and so on, and didn't change the name and didn't do anything, I think I would be all behind it. And I think that's what we're doing here. I think we're improving that property. And I am a hundred percent behind the original design, but I think this new oval design that they've presented. Is, and the desire to fix that pathway and to do the things, some of the other things that they've discussed, the landscaping, tree, planting of trees. I think this is a win-win and I'm a hundred percent behind the oval. I guess it would be option one or two. I don't know, was there a number for it, two? Oval.
Oval temple.
That's all I've got, everybody. Trustee, you?
Just a question, so to trustee May sixth's point, just for clarification, tonight, we would be voting only on the layout, not actually allocating funds or anything beyond that, just approving a bit. So there's a plan for people who are fundraising to show them, correct? That's okay. And then, I've thought about it, there's a lot to it, I've listened to Ainsley's points and I, it's a hard decision, I've been weighing it back and forth.
That's a creation.
Anyways, after thinking about everything, I really do, as long as we as a board commit to cleaning up the path and making the Williams Brooks Memorial. Cleaner, better, brighter, I'm all for this plan, because I really think it's gonna create interest to the William Brooks Memorial. I know, I've only been there once, and I think as people end the parades and they go to the veterans memorial and people are gathering there. People will be curious and, and take the pathway back and explore, and so. I think this is a good compromise where we're still honoring that memorial and creating some interest in it, but also creating. A place that's local and a canvass and tying our new park, our village hall and everything together. So those were my comments.
And just for information only, I think my conversation with Dennis, Josh, Debbie, others, I think. The shovel in the ground number is like three hundred thousand dollars. To get to that point, that's like the number they need to get to. Just for reference, so people understand where they are and where they would stand. First time. I gotta, I'll screw it up a couple times, I'm using the older words.
So, my perspective on all this is that unfortunately, it's, it's laid at my feet now, after so many years of standing still, and unfortunately, the world doesn't stand still. So I would say that because of this, we have to carry on the momentum of what we have going on at Sequoia Park. What we have future development of Orchard and Skidmore, and the new village hall location. And this is a cohesiveness that we're trying to use and take advantage of the, the drawing. And what I also see it is that. The Veterans Memorial will give more appeal to the Brooks property. And if I get, not only from the veterans group, who are already mentioned and taking on the. Opportunity of planting more trees for those that we're gonna lose, if we are gonna lose five trees, they're already talking about planting five trees in their placement. That, from my fellow colleagues, we start talking about it, taking on responsibility or moving the Brooks property. Cause now they're intertwined, and so I look at it as gonna showcase the Brooks property more than anything. I also look at it, the eight benches that are gonna be part of the memorial. As in addition, again, to give people an opportunity to venture off the Brooks property, which is something I look at as a benefit. I, I'd also say this, as we start talking about the memorial itself, it's an inspirational piece, right? If we put it in another part of our community, it's not gonna have the same appeal as what we intend to do with it. And that is to inspire people. And the other thing about it, as we intend to inspire, we also have to realize that malicious intent can be. Be out there, right? And so we have already talked about that, our police force has allocated twenty thousand dollars in the budget to oversee the park. Well, this is right next to the park, so I don't see that as being an issue going forward. I also look at that, we have to, we have to continue to move, and you can't stop progress. And in the same breath, more is lost by indecision than by making the wrong decision. And for that, whether some of you, my decision is wrong, I'm supportive of this.
Trustee Pierce, I'm not forgetting you. If you're, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm listening. I am so conflicted on this i-issue, and it's not because of the memorial. It's because of what has occurred in the buildup to the memorial. Trustee Bluthard had some great words. Trustee Martinez had some great words. This is inspirational. This is meant to honor our veterans, and they so deserve that. You know, as a veteran, I would love to have the village build this on my empty lot next to my house. And I could claim that it was part of the honoring of my being a veteran, so. For, for what has occurred over the last two years, where we have individuals, for whatever reason, have decided they don't want it. And they start following some marching orders from a few other individuals. It just saddens me because it has made such a division in the community. The VFW, the American Legion, members within it are fighting with each other, the, the veterans organizations are arguing with the veterans committee to build this. The, the village is getting griefed, the trustees are, are going back. You know, I had somebody come up to me and tell me I wasn't worth the pimple on somebody's rear end because of this veterans memorial. The stuff that has been said over this memorial, to me, is very disheartening, when it should be the most beautiful thing that we're building in this community. And I think we have an opportunity, as trustee Martinez say, says, to be inspirational and to build something that is, that is wonderful. Yes, I know it impacts the Brooks Wetlands. I do think it will enhance it over time, and as people get used to it. They will say, you know, this is the right spot. I know that there's, there's a lot of concerns about the money. And, which is another piece of flypaper on the wall, in my opinion, because as they build it, the money is coming. I have not put any money into it yet, because I wanted to see where this went, and I wanted to vote on it first. But I will tell you, once the vote occurs as to the, the, the memorial design being implemented. I will be buying at least three bricks to honor veterans in my family, so. I would, I would think that others would continue to flow money into this to make it happen. I support this, I have. I support this, I have always supported it, I think the veterans deserve a memorial, and I think in this case, this is the best solution for the village. All of a sudden, at the end, after two years, we have people going around with whisper campaigns, talking about, oh, we can build it here, or we can build it there, or we can build it here, oh, maybe we need to hold off on building it, why, we discover this piece of paper, we discover that. The time for that is over, the time now, the location has been picked, the memorial has one further, two further steps. And those two steps are to get the design approved, and then to start building it, and it's time. Seventeen years of this, I've listened to the memorial discussion, and it goes on and on and on and on. In the meantime, our veterans are getting older and older and older and older, and they need, and they deserve to see something. It's time now to put this to rest and move on to other things for the village. So I would encourage all the trustees to vote yes for this, even if they don't have the instructions to do so. And that's all I have to say.
trustee Peterson?
I do like the oval design, I do, I think it's they were asked to make the memorials smaller, and it better be more respectful to the Billbrook Wetland, and they did it, and thank you for that. It's, it's gonna be very nice. We talked about, basically, we talked at that meeting, and you said if they, if they made it smaller, and, and they did, and Scott's right, we've gone around and around and around, and the time going around is over, and we need to approve this and go forward, so Debbie, thank you for making it fit better, being more respectful, Billbrook, thank you.
Okay, so I can go around, probably repeat everything we already have said, if you wanna do it again.
May I?
You know, I'm gonna do, we're not voting now, but between meetings, which will be hopefully soon, I will allow public comments again, before we do, is that okay?
Well, I'd like to just say my piece, and then we'll the writing is on the wall.
Sure, the writing's on the wall. Well, yeah, you can say your piece, you know, just
I just have a few points around.
Well, just, yeah, go up to the microphone and use it so that they hear, yep.
First of all, I wanna tell the veterans committee and four or six of the board, or two-thirds, that the name is Brook, not Brooks, and you guys do this over and over and over, which shows you don't even know who he is, or was, and you don't care, but that's fine. The last meeting, we were to be invited to the meeting with the committee to discuss changing of the monument, and we were invited to the first one, and after that, we were completely omitted. So, as far as this, yes, the oval was actually my idea, that I came up with, and I said, put it up in the ellipse, move it forward, and it's still pretty darn big, and I don't think it needs to be that big. My husband is a veteran, he has two Purple Hearts, I am not anti-veteran, I'm not anti-veterans' memorial, but this was to be a conservation area, you are not conserving the conservation area. What is wrong with you? It's like the song, take paradise and put up a parking lot, and that's what you're doing. And the monuments will block the view of the wetlands, and you're gonna get graffiti on the back, and so be it. The offer of the cameras that I was gonna put in to the park are, it's gone, so you're gonna do what you're gonna do, and anyway, it's broke.
Thank you, thank you. So, as we move through, okay, so we're gonna if we're voting on something later, is it the consensus of the board that we're voting on the whole design versus the circular design? Is that the consensus of the board? Oh, oh, okay, so that'll be what we, the agenda item at the regular meeting in about twenty minutes. So, the board's preference, and I've heard from them, you know, here and before, that it appears the oval design is the one that the board will be voting on.
That was also ours.
Okay.
We met the, AVM board met the other night, and we voted on the oval.
Okay.
But I did wanna present the two.
Sure, appreciate it, yep, still get some concepts of all. Okay, so I think, you know, this is on the next agenda, thank you guys for coming, I appreciate it, so we will move on, this will be on the meeting in about second half of this agenda, if you still believe there's a whole nother meeting that hasn't happened yet, so, yeah.
I believe it.
Okay.
I did wanna say, I did wanna say one thing, though, to Dennis. Thank you for everything that you've done, thank you for, actually, Dennis did the redesign, and he has, I'll say tolerated me. He has worked with me very closely to get this done, he went out there and painted, if you haven't seen the layout, it's done, the ground is painted and staked off, Dennis did that last week. So I just wanna say again, thank you so much, Dennis.
All right, thank you, thank you for your presentation. Now, to fear where I am, okay, we have number four, which is now number six, which is discussion regarding the purchase of network equipment at the new village hall. Amy, you're back. This is like, this is trustee Martinez's initiation.
I'm here to request approval, or to present to you the proposals for equipment for the new village hall. This would be two type of proposals, just to keep it simple, both to CBWG, both would be purchasing of Sourcewell contracts, or Sourcewell state contract. The first one would cover our backend network of two servers and the storage for the, the village hall, so that we could move the domain controller, Laserfish, the file imprint server, from the police department over to the new village hall, since we will no longer have the fiber connectivity. And the other quote would be for the four wireless access points, the related switches, and the firewall. With this, the budget that was for FQC, that was indicated for this was sixty-five thousand originally. After a lot of hard work, and paring down a lot of our needs to be exactly, to be what is must haves at this point, given the technology pricing right now, and challenges with procurement, we came in at sixty-three thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and four cents, right now. This is the opportune time with the meetings right now, with having the meetings reversed, and then having it be approved, because they're in stock right now, but next week, who knows, and then it might all change.
For instance, we got a, we got a furniture quote today, and they told us this pricing is good until Friday, and then the tariff prices are, so that's how they're really, yeah, I know, right, yeah.
So, there's a lot of, the switches were a challenge. The switches that I had just gotten three months ago for the police department, which were the best ideal switches, were less than two thousand dollars a piece, three months ago, they were over eight thousand dollars a piece. So, there was no way we could afford to do it, it just, I couldn't do it. So we, I worked it out, we were able to do it. So that's what this is, I'm not gonna go through all of that, you know, ins and outs of everything, the one major change is, though, right now, our environment is VMware for the backend, they have gone with their licensing structure, we're not doing that, I don't feel it's necessary for a village hall to hire him, because we're not twenty-four seven. The big thing with VMware over HyperV is the automatic failover, if one of our host servers would die, it would automatically fail over to our other one, ours will not do that at village hall, but considering that we'll be within normal, you know, Monday through Friday, there would be somebody there, or help nearby, you know, a call away that could do the failover, unlike the police department, so.
All right, thank you, any questions?
Can I say something, Your Honor?
Yeah.
You know, Amy's talking about how hard they've worked on this, I can tell you right now, I'm in Fort Worth, we're installing fifty new PCs that have to be reimagined to Windows eleven, we're adding them to the network domain, we are adding in twenty-three ceiling cameras to monitor patients, and the cost of that is seven hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. So what Amy's doing, and paring down the prices and working hard on this, is very, very good job, thank you, Amy.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Amy, item number seven, which was item number six, discussion regarding an intercomamental agreement for participation in the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network. This Dennis, I'm assuming?
Thank you. For any of you that aren't familiar, there's a an organization that sets up a mutual aid program for public works. And they buy throughout the state of Illinois into your sections, mainly geared around storm damage related to tornadoes, or wind, trees down. What you can do is you can put out through the board, a message of what you need, the area, equipment wise, and the other communities that will respond, become a volunteer for up to like a five day period, and then it starts costing them, which could be reimbursable through the like a FEMA program, if it's a natural disaster, declared a state disaster. But we have utilized it over the years, not for us, but we went to other communities and supported them with our help, luckily, we haven't had to do it, but it's a, it's a low cost, I forget what the, the is for the membership, but it's a nice, nice thing to have in case we do have some storm damage or disaster.
Any questions for Dennis? All right, thank you, Dennis, next item is discussion regarding a text amendment related to a government, to government signs, or within the village of Antioch, Howard?
Hello, so the planning and zoning board on May what was it, May seventh, Wednesday?
Yeah.
Probably this month. Review the text amendment for governmental related signage, to give some flexibility. This came about because of the new village hall wall sign that's being proposed, is gonna be internally illuminated, it's gonna be channel lettering, it kind of mimics what's the existing sign right there by the former business that eventually moved out of that building, is a building that's being remodeled. At that time, when I put it in my staff report, it was, it was, it was good, it was allowed, it was part of the sign review process. As we move forward in time, we became more stringent in signage, especially in the Antioch Form Based Code District, Sign District, which requires signage or either sandblasted wooden sign, either with carved letters or protruding letters, or HDU identity urethane sign with protruding letters. Now, in this situation, the new village hall building will be located on a secondary street from Main Street, it's gonna be behind tall buildings. So it does make sense to have something that could be illuminated internally, that could be seen from far away, especially for people that are coming, the general public, that are coming for public meetings, and what have you. So this was the catalyst for this ordinance, to be proposed to give the municipality some flexibility. So what's changing is section ten dash fourteen dash twelve, institutional uses, government, schools, park, and churches. Letter A goes into details about ground signs for a public entity. What the village is proposing is adding a second subsection, letter B. Well, I'll bring it here verbatim, so everyone on the board will have an idea. So the new proposed ordinance section would be, the village, the village shall be permitted signs with a maximum height of ten feet and a maximum signed face of forty-eight square feet. Signs may be designed in such style with such materials that are approved by the community development director. External or internal illumination shall be permitted. Village signs shall be exempt from the additional requirements set forth in this code, including those imposed by the Antioch Downtown Sign District. In determining whether to approve a purpose three government sign, the community development director may consider any special regulations that have been adopted for an area of special character. If the community development director denies a purpose three village sign, the village board may override the denial by a majority vote. So basically, in a nutshell, it gives the village some flexibility with signs moving forward. This is for the proposed village hall sign, may also come up for the public works down the road, or may come up in other village-related buildings that are located in areas of the municipality, and maybe in a residential district, which prohibits large signs or signs identifying a public building. So this gives the municipality flexibility, for a new village hall, and for any government-related buildings down the road.
Questions for Howard? All right, well, just one.
I have questions, I have questions, I'm unmuting.
Yeah, trustee Mason.
If you change this, then that could apply to government buildings, being such a broad word, and the schools can do what they want. So if the school wanted a ten-foot sign, I think this one is the word government.
So the ordinance says
The village is going.
No, it's, okay, the village is.
Yeah, we mean.
But it falls under
No, I see, I see the second part where it says a government sign, but I do get it, I see, so maybe in the one, two, three, four, fifth line, change the government sign to a village sign.
Yeah.
You see that, fifth line, second, fourth word, third word from the right? It's, here, I'm in section B, it's a government sign, it just says.
And determining whether to approve a purpose three government sign, H two, section B.
Yeah, it says in determining whether to approve for a government sign, just amend that, say village sign. That still, does it, right? Howard, okay, we'll do that, and we'll then forward that amount, okay? Trustee Pierce, yep?
You know, I understand the reason of this, when we were planning Public Works, one of the places I drove by, I can see their internally illuminated sign all the way from the highway, so it's quite apparent that it's, that it's the public workplace, well, actually, at first I thought maybe it was a big pot store, but I wasn't sure until I got closer. So, you know, they're very visible, and we just sit there and told the high school, no, you can't change your sign and fall outside the ordinance, because it's, it doesn't conform to what we're trying to do in this town. And now, because it's more convenient and easier for the village, we're gonna change our rules, the same rules we've been making every business follow for the last several years. That's, we should be leading by example, we should be finding a way to have a sign that conforms to the village code that's visible, not changing the rules so that we're, we can make it work for us. I don't, and I appreciate planning zoning going through this, I appreciate Howard going through this, but we have to lead by example, not by, not by changing the rules to work for us, so I don't think this is a good idea.
Any other comments?
I'm gonna get a little bit. Trustee Pierce, does bring up a good point regarding the request by the high school, and at the time, I was And at the time, I was on the planning zoning committee, one of the things I brought up that come to mind was the fact that it was a liability, in my perspective, it was a liability to the village because it was only a couple hundred feet from our busiest intersection in our community, which is uh, Route one seventy-three and eighty-three. And we know good and well that IDOT reflects the latest stats that fifteen thousand vehicles go north and south on Route eighty-three and uh, twelve thousand vehicles go east and west on Route uh, one seventy-three. So I think that Skidmore will never see that type of traffic. And so we have to also realize that um, that the reason we deny that request was a liability issue more so than uh, us trying to uh, do something more favorable for us to then then helping the the high schools. I just wanted to make that.
And and I think um, one of the things that we talked about other places, you know, this is a stationary sign on the side of the building. If this was an E M B sign, I would, I would feel differently.
Right.
You know, so this is E M B. It's just, I think this kind of almost mimics the footprint of what was there before. Because um, that was prior to whatever Form Based Code was instituted, is that accurate, Howard?
Yeah, so that's accurate. So in my staff report, I go into details. So the former, the former sign was actually, the former sign that's actually there is a fifty-six square feet. And it contains the words uh, Circadian Health Wellness Center. And is it broken into two rows of lettering? The proposed sign that the village would like to do, and I put it towards the end in red ink, is gonna be forty-four square feet and it's just gonna be on one line. That says, and I show the, the the rendering here. It's gonna say Antioch Village Hall. So the proposed sign is smaller than what's there currently, and it's just one row versus two. What's different is here is we'll have our little logo in front of the Antioch Village Hall sign. But again, I, I brought this to the planning and zoning board, they approved it unanimously, seven zero. But one of the things that I I discussed really well in that presentation was, again, Village Hall serves the public, the public needs to know where the building is located. If it's sandblasted small, uh, according to the current code, people may miss it. So I see it as an identifier. Now, I'm not talking a commercial venture where I'm trying to advertise my business like a movie theater, I want people to see it five blocks down because of the lights, because of the marquee sign. This is a sign that kind of replicates the sign that's there. The only thing that changed was the district. And the district has gone more conservative and more stringent. But there is a difference between advertising a business and advertising the public hall, which is used by many people for public services.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so this is, I believe, item number eight. Okay, so yeah, thank you. So we'll have the vote called on the regular business. Alright, believe it or not, hopefully nobody has any other business, can we adjourn the committee, most adjourn the committee the whole meeting?
So moved.
Those are trustee Peters.
Second.
Second trustee.
Are we, are we doing trustee reports? Are we doing trustee reports at the end?
Yeah, I have it on here on the regular business, I think, before the, before the departments.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'll, roll call please. Oh, sorry, all favor.
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Alright, committee's adjourned ten thirty-four. Alright, let's move right into the next meeting. Roll call for the uh, regular meeting, immediately following the committee at all. This part's gonna go.
Uh, trustee Mason.
Roll call. Yeah. Making up, yes. I think.
Here.
Here. Trustee Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Trustee Peterson?
Present.
Mayor Gert.
Present. Um, alright, so um, one trustee remote, uh, pass it, going right to the consent agenda. There are six items under the consent agenda, are there any items that uh, any of the trustees wish to be removed from the consent agenda? There was one, three, seven, yeah, please. Um, alright, uh, roll call, uh, I need a motionist, I can make a motionist second, yeah.
Motion.
Motion trustee Luther.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, roll call please.
Mason.
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
I.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next, a consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable is prepared by staff in the amount of eight hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars and nine cents, do I have a motion to second?
Second. So moved.
Motion trustee Pierce, second trustee Luther. Any discussion there, any of the big items that you want highlighted? Alright, uh, roll call please.
Mason.
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Item eight, consideration and approval of an ordinance evading section ten dash fourteen dash twelve of the Antioch Village Code regarding governmental signs within the village of Antioch, Illinois, ordinance number twenty-five dash five dash nineteen. Do I have a motion and a second waving the second reading?
Some of waving the second reading.
Motion trustee Pierce.
Second.
Uh, sorry, uh, who's second? Uh, McNeil's second, um, alright, uh, roll call please.
Mason?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Martinez? Pierce?
What, what did Martinez say?
He upstayed, he was on the planning and zoning.
Oh, okay. Um, I vote no.
Peterson?
Yes.
Alright, four voting yes, one abstention, one no, motion carries. Final action regarding the Veterans Memorial Project Layout and Specifications, um, approving the oval design as presented by the Veterans Committee this evening. Like to make a motion to approve the oval design as presented. Motion trustee Luther.
Second.
Second trustee Pierce, roll call please.
Mason.
Yes, and I hope we get the financials on this too, so everybody's happy with everything.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Um, consideration and approval of the proposed operating budget for the fiscal year, May first, twenty twenty-five through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Uh, do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, roll call please.
Mason?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, uh, motion carries. I was told, Jeff, you're done talking today. That's it, okay, no administrator report, is there anything to the administrator? He's kinda given us this whole spiel already. Um, village clerk? Uh, trustee reports, I know trustee Pierce had something you wanna bring up, any other trustees?
No.
Alright, trustee Pierce, forageers.
Um, one thing that came up recently in discussions was um, the Antioch Traveling Closet is in dire need of essential items for for families, you know, items such as uh, deodorants and uh, diapers and and items of that nature. And in discussions, um, it, it was asked, can I do a donation event at the Marshall Tucker Band? And from those discussions, um, I reached out to a couple trustees and they said, oh, they'd love to join me. Um, and that, that made me think, maybe the board as a whole would like to be included. They don't have to attend if they don't want to, but I think if we have a table of events at the, our events that is a, the village board supports community activities or actions with this banner on it that says something of that nature, that trustees can sit there and collect money for, in this case, the Antioch Traveling Closet. Or if people wanna drop off donation items for the traveling closet, um, they could do that. And then it's some, then at the next event, uh, if other organizations wanna have a, us collect donations for them at these events, we can, we can randomly choose other organizations. But I think it'd be good for the village board not only to sit here and and vote on things, but also to show our support to the community and the, the non, nonprofit organizations that are, are um, part of our community. And if we can sit there and listen to a concert and collect items for, for our organizations, I think it would be a good thing for us and it would help people know that we do care for our community and we do support our community and we wanna help those organizations as best we can. So I'm, I'm inviting the whole board to join me and I'd like their approval to put up a sign that said the of, of the effect that the village board is supporting community activities or something of that nature. I talked to the attorney to make sure it was right, of course. But um, that's, that's what I'm wanting to propose tonight. Uh, I'll be there collecting things for Antioch Traveling Closet as it is. But I'd like the whole board to, a- as we move forward, try to do this at every event and randomly support, um, maybe out of a hopper, maybe out of a bingo tourney thing, um, an organization for that event. But starting off with A T C. So I, I'd just like the thoughts from the board members.
Yeah, um, I think it's a great idea, Scott, and and what trustee Mason was just saying is accurate because the word getting out is the big thing. So the more of us that spread the word and get it out and and obviously you need to, you're taking the lead on this, so we'll dump it on you, but you need to organize it and get it going. But Will, I'm more than happy to help out wherever you need.
Okay, I'll work on getting the, the word put out if that, if that's what we need. I, I'd be happy to do that, I was just holding off to this board meeting so I could talk to all the trustees.
Alright, thank you back there.
Good, trustee Peterson.
Um, you know, I, I love the idea and I appreciate of you bringing that up. The other thing that comes to mind for me personally is that as a new trustee, I've been meeting a lot of the organizations here in our community and it comes to mind that there are about nineteen uh, civic uh, society organizations, nonprofits here based in Antioch. And I look at it as like maybe something we should champion as well is a opportunity to run a non-for-profit um, fair of sorts where people can have uh, nineteen, all nineteen communities come out, uh, set up a booth and get to make introductions with uh, our community and see where they could get volunteers to sign up just the same or get more people involved. And I, I'm shameful to say it, I wasn't aware that we had so many.
Maybe, maybe one of our food truck events or something, they get all set up.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, perfect, thank you, okay. Thank you, Scott, trustee Pierce, um. Where the heck am I here? Alright, uh, department reports, assistant village administrator.
Really? Really?
Training there for staff, um, I'll be quick. Um, is my role continuous to evolve with the village, was taking on more of an assisting role to carry out Jeff or, I'm sorry, administrator Ketchow's vision and direction of the, of staff. Um, one of the things I'm excited about is being able to hand off some of my stuff and uh, we've talked about uh, Director Peterson starting and jumping right in the fire. Our parks director also starting in March, right? It looks like it was yesterday, but she feels, it feels like she's been here for ten years, just her knowledge of Parks Department and also our community. Uh, but she's been drinking out of a fire hose and also one of the areas where we've had a short staff for a while. So she's got exciting news about rebuilding what's going on down in the Parks Department. So with that, that allows me to pass off things like um, our concert series, though. Um, we'll have a transition plan in place, we'll go, all of that will be going back to the Parks Department. So I won't have much to do with that once, once we get kind of in a line like that. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. Also, Amy's here, uh, we usually don't get a chance to uh, celebrate her. Um, so I'm excited, uh, she's one of the people of my role of all, she reports uh, through the administration and I get to work with her on projects with uh, Village Hall and uh, working with her, work with Director Peterson on the finance software and the million other things that the I T area of our administration touches within the village. So Amy, uh, thank you for all that you do. Uh, Kim Peterson, or uh, I'm sorry, Kim Peterman, our business liaison, uh, was with Blair in Las Vegas recently uh, for the I C S C conference. I've got some handouts for all of you, I'll hand out just a second. Uh, we had brochures made, uh, for all the development opportunities uh, within the village. And also Kim did a really nice job putting together some folders with um, prospective properties and opportunities for uh, businesses and developers uh, for the village of Antioch. Uh, so I just wanted to highlight that, I'll get you guys copies of that. Um, and finally, I've been working with our communications consultant. We've, we've, uh, excuse me. Uh, I mentioned earlier, uh, we're going to be starting an e-newsletter uh, that'll be coming out every Thursday following the rich board meeting. Uh, that'll be going out to residents and uh, this fall, we'll hopefully be kicking off uh, twice a year in home, uh, direct mail piece as well. Uh, they're also um, going to be launching our new website, so that's been a big project all the department heads have been working on to get the content for that. Thank you.
And one thing you didn't mention, so, we did get the appraisal back last week for this building, so we can start marketing this building, so. Alright, um, Public Works, right, or Parks, you're Parks too, okay, Parks, sorry. Someone put it in my bag.
I'll be quick, thank you. Uh, my notes are my. Um, this past weekend, we had a successful opening um, for the twenty twenty-five season of the Antioch Aqua Center. Um, it was a little chilly, but my children still enjoyed the eighty-four degree pool water. Um, thank you to the hardworking staff in Public Works and our seasonal aquatic staff who made that happen. Um, today, or this week, today included, um, we have uh, day camp staff training and parent open houses for our uh, camps that kick off next week on Monday. Um, our first week, we have over a hundred and fifty campers joining us um, over two sites. Um, so that's very exciting. Um, registration increases as the summer continues. Um, on June seventh, we have thirty-three businesses participating in the Summer Line Walk with two hundred and sixty-nine walkers enrolled. Registration is still open um, until we sell out at five hundred, so tell your friends, tell them often and let me know if you wanna volunteer. Um, tomorrow morning, I'll be presenting to the Antioch Rotary Club at seven thirty A M. Uh, to, I throw that in there, um, to um, talk to them about the um, events and happenings we have um, going on um, from the village perspective for the remainder of the year. And I'm very thrilled to let you know that I anticipate a new specialty that supervises, starting with the uh, Parks Integration Department in the next week or two. Um, and the timing couldn't be more perfect with forty-two remaining events in twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, here comes along, Public Works.
It was, I was, it was.
No, no, I said here comes along with that.
Couple, uh, couple projects I'd like to highlight, not really large projects, but um, some improvements were made to the van shell, just painting, uh, scraping, so a lot of the uh, trim boards were all painted. Um, front of the uh, van shell and the back of the van shell. Uh, the crosswalk at Portrait, I'm not sure if anyone noticed, but the uh, flashing beacon was installed and with the activation button, so the pedestrian walks up to that crosswalk, push the button and there are lights on both sides that are activated. A motor was pulled last week. Uh, all the downtown flags, I'm sure you've seen, the hanging baskets and planters were installed. The display, along with the Aqua Center, this flag had its own Saturday, so um, staff worked on it. Kind of tried to come in and finalize some items with some of the jets. Uh, the Woods of Antioch was held starting June eleventh. All the vegan saw cutting the roadway from the curb and gutter. And then the concrete uh, removal or the concrete roadway removal will start June sixteenth. Uh, scheduled completion date is August eighth for that project. Uh, one item that uh, was kind of surprising, I was dealing with IDOT project that I initially uh, explained in a previous report from Route fifteen, or Route one seventy-three down to uh, Highwood and Lake Delibley. IDOT plans to redo that roadway and they're making improvements to ADA uh, areas and sidewalk. Been requested for pedestrian crossings being followed by Route fifteen, nine, one seventy-three. Um, they've committed to uh, supplying two of those crossings at that intersection. When that project's going to happen, um, might be a year or two, but um, that will allow us to make that connection to Pearland Harbor, the downtown, the village will have a small project extending the sidewalk from Anastasia's to the intersection. That's a fairly small project, whether we do a house or a small contract. So that was very good news. Uh, and then uh, IDOT released a bulk of funding.
So that was very good news. Uh, and then uh, I dot released a local funding grant opportunity, four hundred million dollars total. Uh, I sent through a webinar last week. There's a deadline to submit projects due first. I have a few that I have in mind. H R Green is involved with, they're gonna assist me in in billing out the applications. Uh, one, and what I brought up, Orchard, is a roadway for the road program. Estimates came in a little bit high, but that may be a roadway that will score high within the criteria that I dot has. Will make some downtime improvements. Um, there's a few other ones. So hopefully, uh, those projects will score well and will receive um, through I dot.
Humble Dennis that uh, Route one seventy three fifty nine project was not on I dot's radar. So he completely got that done by himself to get there. When we eventually have a path up Harren Harbor and your property, people can get downtown on their bikes for it. Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, please, any executive session? I doubt it. Alright, um, I have taken a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Is that Bada's one?